Planning Board meeting for May 11, 2023 is now in session. First item is Chairman's comments. Tonight I do not have any comments at this point. So I'm going to get right on to item number two. A new public hearing will be held as a petition of applicant IV III Stoughton Logistics Park LLC, Tyler Mortes, Brookfield Properties, Meadowlands Plaza, Suite 301, East Rumford, New Jersey, 07073, and owners TL Edwards, Inc., and Edwards Acquisition LLC of 100 Wales Ave, Avon, Mass., and J.F. White Contracting Company of 56 Old Page Street, Stoughton 02072, and represented by Langin Engineering and Environmental Services, Inc. of 100 Cambridge Street, Suite 1310, Boston, Mass., for a special permit under the section 6.4.5.5, site landscaping, and 6.4.7.2, general landscaping guidelines for the proposed development of three industrial warehouse buildings to be located on 0 Maple Street, Assessors Map 093, Lot 011, 45 Maple Street, Assessors Map 093, Lot 012, 0 Turnpike Street, Assessors Map 93, Lot 014, 1157-1185, Turnpike Street, Assessors Map 093, Lot 016, 0 Page Street, Assessors Map 093, Lot 017, 162 Page Street, Assessors Map 094, Lot 050, and 56 Old Page Street, Assessors Map 093, Lot 007, in an industrial I zoning district. So I think we'll take up the special permit first, and we'll get into the continued hearing. So if we could have the owner and his applicants come up and explain what's going on, it would be good.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm RJ Lyman, counsel to the applicant. I'm joined up right now with Hillary Holmes, who's the lead engineer on the project. Do we have slides? I'm sorry. So, as you know, we've been in front of you now the sixth time on the continued public hearings, and for the first time on the new special permit. This just reviews what you know and we've been doing, which is working with other boards and commissions, as well as the staff in the town. So we're here now, as you said, Mr. Chairman, to talk first about the special permit related to the landscaping, the parking areas and the like, and then about some of the continued issues. And when we finish talking about this, I'll come back to reviewing some of the conversations we've had with you and with the staff since we've asked for it in front of the board, if that's useful, I think. But for now, Hillary, to talk about the parking landscaping.
Yeah, I can go to the next slide.
Wait, they did a lousy job with this air conditioning thing.
Go to the next slide. So this is just an aerial of the site and the surrounding areas, just to help give a sense of what the site looks like today. We're looking sort of from Maple and Turnpike towards the south. So you can see the existing site is a TL Edwards quarry. There's also, it's a heavy industrial use in this area. There's some trailer truck parking onsite, as well as the quarry, and some other industrial buildings. In terms of the neighboring properties, you have the IKEA, which is towards the background of the site in sort of the upper right, and you have the Agri Industries to the right, directly to the right. So, you know, really see this as being a really transformative project for the town and also for this area, to really improve it from what it is today. You can go to the next slide. And this is just to remind...
You're gonna have to keep the mic a little bit closer to you. Yes, just the way this air conditioning...
No problem. Is this better?
Yes, better.
Great. So just to orient everyone with the site itself, we have Maple Street to the top of the page, and then you have Turnpike Street to your left, and you have Page Street to your right, and you have the IKEA site on the bottom of the page. What we're proposing are three industrial warehouse buildings. The three buildings total approximately 880 square feet with those... Eight hundred, total for the three buildings, yes. With those buildings, you also have, you know, site access roads. You can see the truck court areas for loading, as well as trailer truck parking and employee parking areas as well. We have access on Page Street for the project. That was one item that when we came to the town in the very beginning of the project, there was a desire to not have any truck access into the site from Turnpike Street or from Maple Street. So which left Page Street. So Brookfield Properties acquired 162 Page Street, along Page Street, to allow for an access road to be proposed at approximately Old Page Street and Page Street that would go through that 162 Page Street parcel. It would proceed through an existing 60-foot access easement through the J.F. White Contracting Company site into our site. So truck access would be in and out from the Page Street access road. Employees would also be able to access that through that road as well. And then on Turnpike Street, you have a forked driveway where you have employee access only. And then you also have where it kind of wise off, the lower driveway is for emergency vehicles, and that would be gated.
Excuse me, just one second. Are you, I didn't realize, you're gonna go through the review of the project right now?
I just wanted to touch, orient people to what the project is.
Okay, because I just want to say, if we're gonna get into the entire project, I want to open up the continued public hearing at the same time, so that... I just don't want to logistically go through something that was gonna be part of the continued public... It's just a legitimate legality type of thing, that's all.
Yeah, no problem.
That's all.
Yeah, my next slide goes...
And I agree, okay.
Yeah, my next slide jumps right into the special permit. So for the special permit, we're requesting a waiver on the landscaping requirements in the bylaw for the sections that were referenced, 6.4.5.5 and 6.4.7.2. Those are specific to the truck loading areas and the truck trailer parking areas that the arrows are pointing to, that right now, like, they're between building one, it's on the top, and between building two, that's in the middle. And then you also have at building three, you have the loading docks on both sides of the building, and a trailer parking area to the north of that, as well as some additional trailer parking and loading to the south of building three. So we're requesting this waiver and this relief from the standards, given the nature and this type of use, and sort of the functionality that needs to take place in the loading dock, in the truck areas, the trailer parking areas. You know, it's, the maneuvering required does not allow for the, your standard, like, parking space interior islands, which is really what the relief is that we're requesting.
As part of my, as part of the presentation, what I'd like you to show is the zoning board, which did have a requirement, which is saying that you have a 10% coverage of the requirement. Can you just show on the plan right now where that 10% coverage is? What you were using is that 10% coverage for the zoning board requirement?
Are you referring to the 10% common land?
Yeah, the common land or this 10% coverage area that the zoning board required.
Yes, we do have that further down in the presentation. We can skip to that.
Can you just get to that bill? Do you know where it might be?
I can, yeah, keep on going. Oh, go back up. I think you just passed over it, yeah. So go up one more slide, or back, yes. So this was the previous common land plan that we had presented to ZBA at the time of when we had requested the variance in the special permit, that showed, in green are the common land areas that we were proposing that meets the 10% requirement of the total lot. Of that area, you know, the other requirement is that 50% of that cannot be wetlands. We're way under that percentage in terms of wetlands.
Did it get a little closer still? I'm sorry.
One of the requests that was made at the ZBA hearing in terms of applying a condition for our approval is that we would look to make the common land more compact, was the verbiage in the condition.
Right, because they wanted access type of thing.
So if you go to the next plan, we eliminated a lot of the narrower, skinnier areas that were to the right and to the left, and we've now provided a more compact area for the common land that's to the south that is continuous. And then we still have the common land area up by Page Street as well. And this also meets a requirement in terms of the 10%, and it also meets a requirement in terms of no more than 50% for wetlands. We have about 12% of that area that's wetlands.
Okay. Just so the board understands, there was provision in the zoning code that asked for them to give a little bit more than, or give the 10%, but they wanted it compact in areas so that they had areas that were either preserved as conservation area or preserved as non-buildable, with the way the code is reading, or public access. That what they've done here is try to give it more compact. They asked that when it got presented to the planning board that it was a more compact area, and that's what they've tried to do in attempt on this part of it. So this was brought up, and it was made aware again last week. It was brought up by them in January. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that part of the landscaping issue was this, because this ties in with what they're asking for a special waiver on right now with the parking. So I want to be sure we were understanding that there was already a variance given by the zoning board for this, and a part of that was for us to look at it, and then the variance now for the parking lot. So the variance they're looking for with the parking lot is that there's a percentage in the zoning code that requires that we have landscaping within the parking lot areas so we don't end up creating a sea of asphalt. And what they've done basically is created that sea, which is against with the zoning, and it's because of the trucks. So logistically, they can't do it because of the use of it, so they're asking us for a variance or on a special permit for that. Any other questions by the board? Any comments from staff? Yeah, from staff. No, Craig? Nothing? Is there any comments from the public on this matter at this point in time?
Just on the variance.
Excuse me?
Just on the variances?
Correct. So what we're looking at right now is this, the variance for the special permit that they're looking for, which is the first item. This is a new public hearing on that item. The next item on the agenda is gonna be the continued public hearing for the entire site process, to complete that, or to work through completing that process. That'll be the next part of it. So the comments right now would be limited to just the landscaping requirement, special permit that they're asking for. Go ahead. Come on up to the table and give your name and your address, please.
Yeah, John Eckler, 60 Silver Glen Road in Stoughton.
You have to get close to the mic, I can't...
Yeah, 60 Silver Glen in Stoughton. Why do we need a variance for the greenery? The trucks can't maneuver in there? What's the story with not following the, what's the story with not following the original plan?
The original plan for that area never had parking within the traffic area where the trucks are. The special permit is a requirement because they don't have that landscaping in the parking area, and because logistically they couldn't. The trucks wouldn't be able to get around the amount of trucks that they have in that area.
Right. So why is that good for us, the variance?
So the special permit is available when, including that interior landscaping, isn't necessary for visually screening the parking from off-site locations. Here, as it happens, in addition to interfering with the maneuverability of the trucks in a way that would be very problematic for the use of the site, it also is not necessary to achieve the express intention of the bylaw, since in this instance, those interior areas aren't really visible from off-site, particularly because of the extra landscaping we're doing around the perimeter.
Bob Mullin, 19 Clover Lane. So I'm just looking for clarification. Are they looking for a variance or a waiver?
Looking for a spe, they're looking for a special permit, which is allowed, the board is allowed to give that as a condition for a special permit.
If it meets the conditions within the special, within the special permit, right? You gotta meet those conditions?
If it meets the conditions, well, it doesn't really say that. This is just a, I'm sorry, it's a waiver, it's a waiver that's allowed by the zoning code, right? It's a waiver, it specifically says, it specifically says that the board can waive that item.
Okay. So we're looking for a waiver, not a variance?
It's not a variance.
Okay, I thought I heard variance.
I'm sorry, I may have used the wrong term. It's a waiver.
Okay, so we're looking for a waiver, meaning it does not apply in this case. You're gonna pass on that. Could we see specifically a blow up on what they're talking about? Because all I see is some green around the building, but I don't see specific details.
So within the area of the parking lot, where she points to, there's five different locations, or seven different locations that are pointed to. Those areas of the parking lot are just all asphalt areas. So they don't meet the part of the code that says there's a, I think it's 10% of the parking lot needs to be filled with some sort of greenery to breaking up the parking lot so it doesn't become consistently all asphalt.
Right, but I also heard there's, the greenery could be obstructing the trucks going around the building.
If we put, if they put the landscaping in per what the zoning code requires, it would cause the trucks to have problems. They wouldn't be able to maneuver around properly.
Okay, could we see where the trucks would be coming in from then? Could you kind of walk me through this? He's given us...
They can do that, sure.
If you don't mind, take a few minutes and show me. I appreciate it.
I'm not near a microphone, but no one has ever had trouble hearing me from any distance.
You'll need, because we are being filmed, you need your microphone.
I apologize here, Mr. Chairman. So trucks coming, you asked a couple of different questions, I think. So first off, trucks will be accessing and exiting the site solely from Page Street. Mentioned earlier, Turnpike, Turnpike Street, front entrance, one gated for emergency access, the only horizontal bar, so that vehicle above a certain height would not be able to enter there. So all trucks will be coming from Page Street along this access drive. What we're talking about here, thank you. What we're talking about here is the landscaping that would ordinarily be in little islands in the middle of these fields of parking. This has nothing to do with any of the landscaping, either the total quantity required on the site, or the compactness or buffering being provided by the landscaping, or, as the board knows, some fencing that we're also being required to do in order to provide visual screening for certain off-site locations. So all this is about little end caps or little islands of landscaping in the middle of the parking field because of the truck turning radii and the like, and the fact that, as the bylaw says, its goal is, it's true, we all like breaking up fields of asphalt, but it's also for visual screening, and we did see that that purpose was being served here. So it's a special permit as a legal matter, which gives them the discretion to grant it, but they do have to find it's in accordance with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw as a whole, for sure. Hope that helps.
Helps a little bit. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So you're not required to give the special permit if you find otherwise, correct?
We're not...
Okay.
When they're asking for a waiver, we're not required to give a special permit.
Okay. So you're gonna waive the requirement of the special permit, and that's required, that's allowed in the zoning bylaw?
Yes, it is. It's allowed, it's allowed in the zoning bylaw for the board to be able to waive that part of the permit.
Could you, someone give me the dis- citation on that, if you don't mind?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point something out on the layout of the plan, and this might, a piece of information that might be important to you, that the interior landscaping requirement has been met for all areas where passenger vehicles will be parking, so there are several other parking fields around the site, and they do contain the required amount of interior landscaping per the bylaw. This special permit is only for the parking fields where it's tractor-trailer parking and maneuverability becomes difficult when they put the end cap islands on. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you. Can I just ask, does this screen show all three buildings?
Yes.
It does?
And the code section is 6.4.9, special permit. The provisions of this section, 6.4, may be waived by special permit granted by the planning board where no substantial detriment will occur. That's all.
And that's the only section, right? 6...
That's the special permit for the waiver of section 6.4, which are the two, that's where, that's the two waivers that they're wanting, the 6.4.5.5 and 6.4.7.2.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, just put your name and street address, please.
Rose Eckler, 60 Silver Glen Road. The question that I had was about the, they brought up the parking lot for the employees. Could they be pointed out on here, and how many spots are there?
What he's pointing to is several different parking spots.
Yeah. And how many, how many spots are there in total? And all of those have greenery around them?
And the, with the employee parking is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter Murphy, 60 Peters Drive, Precinct Two Town Meeting Representative. So basically, that's 572 parking spots that you put out. Where do you have your snow removal going from this whole area? If those are parking spots and you're limited as far as green space? We do get snow up in this area. Where's the snow gonna go?
On our site plan that was submitted as part of the planning board package, we show snow storage areas on the site plan. So those are all designated as where exactly they're being located onsite. They're generally in areas where we have more lawn space, where it's flatter around the perimeter of the roads and the buildings.
Is that in this book here that I have?
That is, this is the traffic impact assessment, so the site plans would not be, with the snow storage areas, wouldn't necessarily be addressed in here. There may be a figure in here that shows the site plan, but there's a separate set of site plan documents, like a full set of drawings for this project, and that's where the snow storage would be indicated on the site plan.
Okay. You also have an additional 400 parking spots that you, that are not shown in any plans that you could build out at a later date, from what I understand. Is that true or not true?
Mr. Chairman, yeah.
The parking spaces that have not shown are actually, would be required as a full buildout of that area if that many spaces were required. So they had to prove to us that they would have enough parking spaces onsite to meet the zoning requirements. They feel they only need the 572. However, they've given us, I think it's, what's it, 900, I can't remember the amount, 900 and something, parking spaces that they can actually provide onsite if it comes to the point where they need those parking spaces, because they needed that per the requirements of the zoning code.
So would that actually, those additional 400 spots, would that chop into the green space that you have highlighted?
It does in one area, you're in front of the building. The other areas reconfigure some of the truck parking lots.
In terms of what's being proposed to be approved as part of this project, it's what you see before you. We are showing the future parking to show that we could meet the intent of the bylaw if required, but what we're asking for in terms of our parking is the 572 and what you see there now. If for some reason additional parking would be required, we would have to come back before the town to build those parking spaces and get planning board approval.
The reason why I asked the question, because previous projects have come in and then come back at a later date, and what happens is it's, it's a case of it's almost too late to ask the question because it's, you know what I'm talking about, previous projects have come back before, and I don't want to get into that, but it's a case of where, I want to ask the question upfront, so the whole scope of this project, there's so many unanswered questions. So the other, I asked about the snow removal, water runoff from this property, where is that gonna go?
Excuse me, can we just, we're gonna limit to the special permit right now, and the other questions will come up on the next part of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Because I don't want to mix the two of them and say that we were answering questions in one open meeting that doesn't belong there. So this is strictly right now to do with this part of the special permit. The next item I'll bring up the continued public hearing, those questions can be asked at the next item.
My one concern is if they eliminate that green space that would absorb some of the water, it's, it kind of adds that, so we'll take it up on the next...
We can take that up, but if, just as a general, in this area, they've provided more green space than, as far as the green space that's required, but they also have underground detention areas and infiltration, is putting that water back into the ground again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Richard Paralyn, 7 Glen Echo Boulevard. These developers get the books, they know what they have to do, but they all come in for variances and waivers. I've seen it before. I was on the planning board 15 years, I'm on the board now, I still see it. The simple solution to this, if they got a problem there, scale back on the building and make it easier, and it'd be better for all the whole neighborhood. Won't have so much noise. They can scale back that building, have that rotary, whatever they want, and put the plants in. Thank you.
Thank you. Guy behind you, you're up, gentleman behind you.
Good evening. I think it's a quick question. Mark Joy, 70 Conny Lane. If we're giving up, I understand, the waiver for 10% sort of internal to the property?
We're not, excuse me, we're not giving up any 10%. There's still landscaping on the property.
So has the perimeter landscaping been increased 10%? Or are we waiving 10% of the total value?
I can't remember the numbers. You guys have to answer that number.
It's a totally sensible question, but which blends two different things. So there's the 10% open space, we are providing that, no ifs, ands, or buts about it. There is an additional set of landscaping that's required to be provided at certain space, at spacing within a parking area. That's what we're looking for, but the quantity of open space and green space is, fully meets the bylaw. It's only this one element as where we're located that we're asking for relief from.
But if the project was in full compliance, we would have perimeter landscape, or open space at 10% plus parking field landscaping, right?
And we're asking that we not have that in the truck parking areas, correct?
So can we offset that parking space landscaping to more perimeter landscaping?
I'm sorry, we've already, long since done that. We're above the...
So you're above the requirement?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on.
Yeah, Jack Eckler, Silver, 60 Silver Glen. Has the board waived this variance in any other location in Stoughton?
Previously, yes. I can name one, since I've been on the board that I recall, would be the, the storage park area over by IKEA, where they put the storage building in there, that parking lot that's to the left of it as you're going up Reebok Drive, that open parking lot that's there. I believe we waived it on that one, I have to go back and look, but I did, completely open parking right there, right? There's, there's no interior parking, so that one there is the one that I can think of off the top of my head that we waived it. So when you go up Reebok Drive, there's a parking lot to the left of the storage building? Do you know what I'm talking about? That's the one that I can think of off the top of my head since I've been on the planning board.
That's coming up the back way into IKEA off of.
No, coming up the back way into Reebok.
Right.
I'm not, I'm sorry, not Reebok, BJ's. BJ's Reebok, that whole area, right.
Parking lot, do we have with the cold storage?
The parking lot across from the cold storage, correct.
Yeah, I mean, is that parking lot, how big does that parking lot compare to this one? How many square feet parking do we have here for the trucks?
I don't think we have a parking lot that's this large for anything in town that's got that much parking for trucks.
So this is the first time we're gonna waive it for a parking lot this big?
I don't think there's a parking lot in town that you can name, this is the large.
Okay. Question?
Anybody else?
Currently, right now, Amazon are parking their trucks off of Maple Street, and I don't see any green space down there whatsoever. So that's actually incorporating, this project is basically gobbling up that piece of land. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct.
Okay, so how come the town hasn't enforced green space down in there that looks like?
They didn't come before us for a site plan review.
They just did it.
I, I don't know, but they didn't come before this board for a site plan review.
Okay, if that was to come before you, typically, you, there would have to be some type of green space down in that area. Am I correct in saying that?
If they were trying to meet the site plan review requirement to the zoning code, yes.
So we, okay, so that, it's basically through you, maybe to the engineering department, that trailer park currently today is not in compliance. Is that a fair statement?
I can't say that.
Okay, maybe that's.
I haven't seen a plan, I don't know what, everything, I don't know how much land they incorporate, I don't know how much other greenery they've got. I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't have that in front of me as a, as something, I can't say it's out of compliance, I haven't had a chance to review it.
Okay. So I mean, if it's a case of where, if they were to go and take an overlay of what is currently there now, you would see the trailer park there, and there's over 100 trailer trucks parked down there. And again, it's, if those trailer trucks, is Amazon gonna give up, let me, all right, let me ask the question. That parking area is being incorporated into this project, is Amazon gonna lose those parking spaces for their trailer trucks?
I'm not part of the business that's happening, that we're letting the land swap is going, I don't know that. I mean, these people are buying the land, I don't have the answer to that question.
It's through you to the clients or the people proposing this, are you gonna evict Amazon trucks out of that space?
So Terry Edwards, who owns most of this real estate now, uses it for material, storage, some excavation materials, and he rents out spaces for people to store things. It will not be a gravel yard or storage place for any of the current activities, it will be a modern logistics facility of three buildings. So it'll be a completely different use of the site. From the town's perspective, it means it'll go from being a site that generates a couple hundred thousand dollars of taxes a year to one that generates about $2.5 million of taxes a year. So it will be a big transformation of the site in pretty much every way.
We shall save questions, we move on further.
Anybody else have any questions? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on the special permit?
So made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, further discussion from the board on this?
I'd just like to say that I don't have an issue with this, there's plenty of green space on the perimeter, the passenger car parking isn't being affected, and every day it seems somebody's getting run over by a truck. So the safer that maneuverability is, the better.
Anybody else?
Going back to the green spaces, in your memo, it says approximately 168 shade trees, 59 understory trees, 141 evergreens, 10 buffer zone enhancement, 384 restoration-sized trees are proposed as part of the planting plan. The only issue I have is approximately and the fact that, again, we, we did, I think we did.
Paul, that's gonna be part of this, the next, that's the part of the site plan review process?
Okay.
That's not part of what we're dealing with right now.
Okay.
We can talk about that on the next part of, I just want to start mixing apples and oranges right now.
All right.
Richard? Anything? Dennis? You're good? Okay. So can I have a motion for, to approve or disprove the special permit that's being requested?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Special permit has been approved. I'm gonna move on to continue public hearing to be held at the petition of applicant IV Stoughton Logistics Park, Tyler Motors Brookfield Properties, Meadowlands Plaza, Suite 301, East Rutherford, New Jersey, and owners TL Edwards and Edwards Acquisition LLC, 100 Wales Avenue, Avon, Mass., and J.F. White Contracting Company, Page Street, Stoughton, represented by Langton Engineering Environmental Services, 100 Cambridge Street, Suite 3, 13th and Beacon, Mass. For site plan approval under section 10.6, site plan approval of the Town of Stoughton zoning bylaws and certain special permits under section 6.1, off-street parking and loading section 6.4.4.1 vegetation standards for the proposed development of three industrial warehouse buildings to be located at 0 Maple Street Assessors Map 093, Lot 011, 45 Maple Street Assessors Map 093, Lot 012, 0 Turnpike Street Assessors Map 093, Lot 014, 1157 to 1185 Turnpike Street Assessors Map 093, Lot 016, 0 Page Street Assessors Map 093, Lot 017, 162 Page Street Assessors Map Lot 94, Lot 050, and 56 Old Page Street Assessors Map 093, Lot 007, in an I industrial zoning district. Kind of a motion to open this meeting.
So made.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
You guys, your mics aren't on.
Okay, so just as a quick explanation, this, this hearing has been in front of us on numerous occasions since last year. There has been various requests and changes and reviews by the engineering department, this town, this various boards, there's been traffic reports that have all been given. At this point in time, I know there's a list out there that was given at our last meeting of stuff, so I'd like to start with Craig to see if we're, where we are with any of those comments from the engineering department, and then I'm gonna let you guys talk, but I just want to get us updated where we are.
So at this point, the, the plans that, the latest set of plans that have been submitted have addressed all of the, the comments that we had so far?
All right, so there's nothing outstanding at this point?
No.
Okay. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, for the record, RJ Lyman, counsel for the applicant, and I'm joined by Hillary Holmes from Langton Engineering, as the project engineer. Bill, if you wouldn't actually mind going to the slide you already guessed I would ask you to go to, thank you. No, you were on the right one, the, no, no, the site plan. So, as the chairman and Craig talked about, there were a list of engineering department items, and then there were really two other principal items we had talked about, which was one is a condition that makes sure that the solar installations on the rooftop are done as, as a large scale and as quickly as possible, and we worked with the chairman and others on that, I think that staff has, has some additional thoughts on that. And then also, as Mr. Belvo, his question pointed out, still on some landscaping related in terms of what the actual plantings are, the volumes and types. And so with that, I think I'll turn it over to Hillary to talk about that, those couple of issues. I think in response to questions that I'm anticipating we'll have, we'll cover some other issues as well, but we'll keep it focused for now. Thank you.
If you could please advance to the next, yeah, the next slide, yes, this slide. So we were last before the planning board back in March, where we had presented our planning, planting plan. Since that time, we've revisited the planting plan to look to see where we can increase the number of trees and plantings that we're proposing. So in green shown on the plan are the additional plantings that we've added since our March plan. And in terms of the numbers, you know, we added 35 additional 2.5 to 3-inch caliber trees, 384 additional restoration-sized trees. So in terms of, when you compare the number of trees that are over 6 inches diameter that we're removing, we're removing approximately 759 trees over 6 inches in diameter, and we are proposing to plant a total of 762 trees. Now that's a combination of different types of trees, the shade trees, the ornamental trees, the evergreen trees, as well as these restoration plantings. So in total, we're increasing the vegetation on this existing site as well by 45%. Right now, it's around 11.6 acres of vegetation, and we're increasing it to 16.8 acres. So if you go to the next slide.
So you went from, I'm sorry, you went from 11.6 to 16.8?
Yes.
Of vegetation now?
Yes.
I have a question. I have a question. Could you, for the, for all of our benefit?
Rich, you gotta bring it, Richard, get closer.
It's off. There we go. Can you hear me all? Okay. Would you describe what restoration tree is for all of us?
Yes, absolutely. If you go to the next slide, we actually have, so this is the palette in terms of the restoration plantings we're proposing. The pictures you can see on the upper portion, as well as the four on the bottom, those are what they would be at a full size. So, you know, you know, after like, say, eight years, full size. The two photos that are in the bottom right are what the restoration plants look like when they first go in. They're smaller material, you know, around three feet in height, and they're usually, they're also called whips, because, you know, the, the branch looks like, looks like a whip, because it's a smaller diameter caliber. Those trees are great to plant because you can provide more of them in a, in an area than you could the larger caliber trees, they also can adapt better to areas. And so one of the approaches we took in the perimeter is to really plant these, to place these pockets of restoration plants to provide a more natural landscape around the perimeter of the site. And so those are on the planting plan, so those clouded areas for the restoration plants.
And there's, how many of them are the restoration plants? 300 and something?
Well, we add an additional 384. The total is shown on the planting plan in the schedule, I don't have that number right in front of me, but if you go back to the planting plan, we can look at it. Yeah, so if you zoom in, if you were able to zoom in, we can get the total. So it's in the lower left corner is the restoration tree planting table.
Are the trees around 300 feet?
Yeah, they're a smaller, they come in like a gallon container, and they're usually around three feet in height.
If how big are the ones you're removing?
Excuse me, excuse me, please, I'm gonna let them finish, and then we can get into your question specifically, okay? I don't want to get anything coming in from the audience that come up in here, yes, specifically at that point.
Yeah, it's a little hard to read, so, in terms of the total, I don't, so I don't have the total quantity there. Is it 384?
Just shy of 400.
Okay.
384.
That is a 384, okay. We have some other buffer plantings that are in the table, on the upper table, that are, also, there are some restoration-sized plantings in that, and the buffer enhancement zones as well. So really applying these in two areas, in our buffer zone enhancement areas that are near the wetlands, as well as the restoration tree planting areas. And I do want to just touch on to, one of the items that was brought up at our last hearing was the desire to incorporate some specific tree species that have a higher potential to sequester carbon. Some of the species that were pointed out to us were maples, lindens, the tulip poplars. So we did revisit sort of our species, like the diversity to our tree species we're proposing. So we did increase the number of maple trees, we did add some tulip poplar trees as well, and we do have some linden trees in there, too.
Anything else? Paul?
I'm very encouraged by your effort to, to increase that. I, I see it as the, something that we would like to move forward with all new industrial complexes, et cetera. So I'm hoping that the, the end results here would be a showpiece that we could say, you know, we have the best interest in, in keeping stuff vegetated. Nobody likes development, taking down trees, et cetera, et cetera, but it is something that happens. The encouragement is to restore, and I, I think you get the point of like, naturalizing areas that are not gonna be used for anything, put them back to nature. And, and the, using the seedling planting, the whips and stuff like that is a very good way to, to achieve that. And whips do, if they're taken care of, do progress quite quickly. I mean, you can get up to 18 to 20, 24 inches of new growth on a whip, if they're taken care of. So we will be watching to make sure that these are taken care of, fertilized, and encouraged to grow as fast as possible. Thank you.
As I mentioned to you, Mr. Belvo, and Mr. Terry, a number of hearings ago, when you first raised this issue about the carbon sequestration capacity in particular, you are absolutely, I do this for work a lot, a lot of different places, you're right at the edge here of what the best thinking is. The Commonwealth itself, through the MEPA process, just started doing this, actually a project Hillary and I worked on, as it happens, just about a year and a half ago. So your thoughtfulness on that is, maybe costly to our client, but it is an appropriate standard for regulators and the Commonwealth, for sure.
Yeah, and Brookfield Properties has a real commitment to the environment, so, you know, obviously, we're providing a very robust planting plan for our site. Brookfield Properties is also going to be donating $50,000 to a tree fund that we've been coordinating with Bill Roth, the town planner, to set up. And so the idea for that is that donation would go into a tree fund that would be administered by the town, so that trees can be planted on town property throughout the town.
And I appreciate that, I was hoping that we could get something, for that to come to fruition, so it is, I'm glad that, since the last couple of meetings we talked about, we've finally come to something with that. Thank you. Anybody else from the board? Anybody else from town? Like to open up to the public, so, yes, sir? Get to get the green, there you go.
Juan Fox, 624 Pleasant Street, excuse me, Precinct One Town Meeting Rep. I have questions in regards to the traffic, the traffic study. This is the most problematic part of this project with, with the neighborhood. And so I've got a chance to take a perusal of the TIA, the Traffic Impacts Assessment, and I have a feel that the, it's flawed in several areas. The first area is in the amount of traffic they're expecting. Now, it's said that it's going to be about 500 employees, it went up from about 3, 4, now it's 500 employees. And that's reflected in the, the parking lot. Parking lot has 572 spaces. Parking lot has 572 spaces. And when you look at the documentation for traffic, it seems like here's all 500 people are showing up and all 500 people are leaving. But my understanding is that this, the project owner is not the employer, they're the landlord. And they're providing space for other companies to come in, to bring their employees in, which means that they're not controlling the quantity, except for the parking lot, which controls it up to about 500 people. And it's a 24-hour, you know, seven-day-a-week operation, so there's three shifts. So instead of 500, it could possibly be 1,500 people going in there. And the traffic assessment should be the worst case, not an average case, but the worst case. Because worst case could possibly be and cause a great impact. The calculating up from what they said, it could be from 1,000 trips for cars to 3,000 trips for cars, along with the 500 trips for trucks. So instead of 1,500 trips, it could be 3,500 trips. Okay? And that way, I believe it's flawed there. Second thing is talking about the, it doesn't talk about the psychology of people driving. And they're making an assumption that 15% of the people driving down Turnpike Street to make a left on Page Street are going to make that left on Page Street. Well, that's also where the majority of the trucks are going, in terms of about 75% of those trucks going. And if I'm going, trying to get to work on time, I am not going to sit behind a stick of trucks waiting to make that left turn when I can just easily go in the right lane and go straight down to Turnpike Street and Pleasant and make a left turn there. And they're estimating about 30% of the car traffic going there. Well, that could be up to 45% of the car traffic making that left turn. Now, that intersection is problematic. It has no left-turn lane. The lights aren't even set up to allow for left turn. And any traffic backup there will back up all the way up through Pleasant Street because it's, the whole street is just two lanes. Wide, sure, in some spots, but it's just two lanes. And if you want to pass, you have to hope that the person who's parked there, or to make that left turn there, decides to be a good doobie and be right close to the lines, and maybe you can squeeze by. Okay? And that's a common thing. But in reality, that's, I believe that's illegal, because what you're doing is you're passing somebody on the same lane that they're in. So that's advocating, if they're going to do that, that's advocating people trying to get by that way. With increased traffic, that they're not taken into account. The other thing is that the, maybe, there was some talk in there about the, a project that the state has for updating that intersection. It's the Turnpike Pleasant Street intersection. It's got, it's got a problem with the road. It's in the past, it's, but apparently from some, talking with a police officer, it's, the possibility is they're going to improve that. The thing is, it's not designed yet, and there's no approval yet, and no funding for it yet. So who knows when it's going to be done? So it almost means that if you don't want to have stuff backed up all the way up to the Dunkin' Donuts, up the street, you're going to have to wait till that gets constructed for you to know that it's okay to do that. The other street thing is that, in here, aside from what's been said, according to the documentation on exactly figure A and B, that 10% of the traffic is going down Pleasant Street. They're planning for it, 10% of the traffic to go on Pleasant Street, and that's truck and car. Pleasant Street, and in the diagram 5B for the trucks, it shows the trucks coming up Pleasant Street, making a right turn on Turnpike Street, and then making a left turn on Maple Street to go into, and then hitting Page Street for the 85% going that way. I didn't hear that been discussed very much. And so I think either they have changed that in some way, but it's shown on the document that that is the case. The other thing on that is that if you are, you have 10% of the traffic going on Pleasant Street, that's coming and going. You have the traffic going into the intersection for Central and Pleasant. That's, I almost know it's a bit of a problematic one for people on Pleasant because there's no left-turn lanes there. If something bigs there, you're waiting till they turn before you continue on. That intersection is not in the assessment, because it's not even discussed. And if they have 10% of the traffic going that way, they should be discussing the impact on that, on that intersection, and specifically, impact of trucks, because they're saying 10% of the trucks are going to be going down that street. And trucks would be extremely problematic if they're using that street to make a left turn going south, or if they're coming north, you know? The, so, in that play, those things, I think this is not complete, especially with the not going with the worst case. And I have a few other things just quickly to mention about, in my own personal view, is that there is no, there's no law in town against jake braking. And for those who are not...
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Jake braking, which is using the engine compression to slow the truck down, and to provide some entertainment here, it's when a truck goes, comes down and goes brrrr. That's called jake braking. It uses the engine compression to slow, as opposed to the brakes. It's very loud in many places. They outlaw that because it's very disruptive to the neighborhood. Well, Pleasant Street is a very, is a high-density street. There's a lot of people, single-family homes along that street. And especially where I live, it's a downhill slope, so you get that occasionally. You have somebody deciding to do that, and that's in the middle of the day. Okay? And it's annoying. But at 3:00 in the morning, because this is a 24/7 thing, that's more than annoying, you know, to wake you up. And since, and there's no, nothing prohibits, prohibits it in town right now. Another thing was, it was made, brought up by Mr. Perilin, is that there's people, you know, that operation is happening 24/7, trucks are backing up into the bays, you know, to do that. Well, when trucks back up, they have this warning beep, 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 beep. And that's going to happen when they do that. And at 3:00 in the morning, when he's got his windows open in the summertime, he's going to be hearing that. It will be heard, and it'll be heard regularly down, and that's a problem as well. And the final thing I wanted to talk about is what has been talked about here by Joe Scardino, is a cash bond. A cash bond to cover their portion of the wear and tear on the roads that we are going to have to cover the repair for, which will happen over time. They have no control of what the weight is of the trucks that are going in there. And we already seen what happens when Amazon has just decided to do whatever they want. At least the state, at least we had some repair. I'd assume it was the state that provided the money for that. But still, it's, it is appropriate to have what would be considered our taxes going up for repair of the road, to have it shifted over to those who are making the roads, wearing the roads down. And it should be, and would be assumption of a kind of a tax in escrow for their portion, however percentage-wise, of the damage that's being caused on the road. And I remember him saying that something of like a 10, a seven-figure issue. I don't know how much it would be, but it makes sense that having something like that would calm people's fears that the roads are going to get chopped up. Now, they talk about resurfacing Page Street, and Page Street, narrow little street going out, but they're talking about reinforcing it. So they're not going to have that situation where the trucks come by, and eventually you're going to end up, excuse me, divots running in there. And my feeling is, eventually, that's what's going to happen. And maybe even coming up Pleasant Street to Turnpike, if that's the case with the 10%. So these are my thoughts, and especially that the TIA is not, is not accurate, and should be readdressed for the intersections for Turnpike and Pleasant. And also, but I just wanted to ask, Turnpike and Pleasant, what's expected there is a, what they call, a level of service of B, when it could be far more than that, when this thing is operating, which means a lot more traffic than what I was talking about before. So it needs to address the two intersections, the Turnpike and Pleasant, and Central and Pleasant. And address the quantity of employees that are actually going to be the worst case across the course of the 24-hour period.
All right. So you brought up three different points. I don't know whether you can make any comments on some of those, and then we can kind of go from there.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just two things real quick. One, Brookfield Properties is one of the largest owner-operators of Class A logistics facilities in the country, if not the world. And they manage these facilities in ways that work for the employees of their tenants. So I appreciate, everyone should appreciate your concern, but our client has made sure that they have designed this so that it'll work for the tenants. That's as to the onsite. They do plan on holding and owning this for a number of years. This is not a developer who comes and builds something, flips it, gets out, and you never can find somebody responsible. Brookfield is a long-term owner-operator. And the second thing is, is the traffic impact assessment, as you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, was reviewed extensively by the town's traffic engineer. It followed all the conventional Institute of Traffic Engineers norms for modeling and determining what mitigation is appropriate. As you know, there were a lot of changes made both to the report and to the conclusions about what work our clients should be responsible for doing as a result of the comments from your peer review consultants. And so we hope that is, in fact, satisfactory to people. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, they should reassess this.
Excuse me?
They should reassess this.
So, just so you understand what he did say, we did have an independent peer reviewer that they paid for to review that entire, that entire report. So we did have another professional review it. We've also reviewed it. I'm not saying what you're saying is right of one, that they didn't get to that last, that last intersection. I can't remember right now, but they may, you may be correct. But we did have people review it at the level that it, you know, that they're supposed to be reviewed at. So it's not like we were negligent in what we're doing. And all the changes that were required by that reviewer were made and assessed by Brookfield.
I submit that it's not complete, that the assessment wasn't complete. And based on statements that have been made, that this contradicts those statements with the 10% going down Pleasant Street, back and forth with trucks and cars. And it's in the assessment, and that has not been stated before, that that's not the case. So if that was done, another set of eyes need to be looking at this and making a judgment on it, not just...
Again, we did. We had, we had an independent person take, put that review in.
Yeah. It's, that's all what I saw on there, and that's what they reported.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, John Eklis, 60 Silver Glen. The assessment that was done on the traffic plan, we have a new facility being built up there, Caterpillar Southworth, which is a repair facility for, it isn't complete, but it's in the making now, for truck repair, heavy equipment repair. And, you know, do we have any idea what the backlash of that facility done before? I mean, how can we do a study when they're not even open yet?
Well, they did a partial traffic study, and their expected impact was included into that traffic report that was done by Brookfield.
And what happens if it's, you know, way above what they estimated?
Part of the requirements we're putting into Brookfield is that if the traffic becomes more than the estimates that are within their study, they have to go back and reassess and make additional changes to two different areas of the streets, the routes, the timing of the lights, and any other necessary things they may be able to do to get it back to what their estimated traffic counts were through those lights.
Okay. And is it true that they cannot, when they're coming up the Page Street to enter the tractor-trailers, the Class As, they can't use the Avon Industrial Park?
No. They can.
They can?
They can.
So they can come in through Avon that side, they can come in off of Central Street down Turnpike, or they can come up Pleasant Street?
Correct.
Okay. Now, isn't Pleasant Street right now, I know a few years back, we had some trouble with that, where the road was sinking, and we had X amount of gravel on that road and...
Turnpike Street.
Turnpike Street, correct. Pleasant Turnpike. Is there a study done on that now? Because the road appears to be just as bad as it was before they did that study. I know they put gravel on top of it to try to push the peat down. That whole area is all peat up there. And if we increase this traffic by 500 trucks a day or what have you, I mean, if it can't handle cars and the limited trucks we have now, how can it handle what's proposed?
I don't believe the report shows 500 trucks a day going down there. That road is being looked at by the state, that's all I know, and the engineering department. I can't tell you anything else about what's going on there.
Okay. I'm just saying that's something to look at before everything's agreed on, you know? Because we tend to get out and pick the lowest scenarios of everything happening to make it look pretty. And then once it real, when, you know, reality comes in, and we're here with the Caterpillar dealership, you know, truck repair there, we take care of some product up here, and it's, you know, tough getting in and out of Caterpillar out in Harpington, so. And there's a three-lane road coming in off of 495, so, just some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Rose Eklis, 60 Silver Glen Road. First of all, I just want to apologize if I'm going back on what you've already discussed or already worked on, but I just found out about this project two weeks ago, so that's why I'm involved now. Main concerns that I had, and that I know other people in the area have, is that there's already damage to the roads at the Target streetlights getting off of 24, the bumps in the roads from the weight of the trucks, and at the Target, I mean, at the Target spot, and also at the Page Street, for the trucks stopping and the weight of them and everything. And we're going to be adding more trucks now to that same route. And I think, I think there was a number of 261 bays. Is that correct?
190?
Fuck bays, no.
190. 198, I think.
Total bays?
Total of 98 bays?
No, 190.
198, I believe it is.
Okay, 198 bays, and then there was 160 spots for parking trailers?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's a lot, coming in and out. So we're adding more to that. I'm concerned about, that road's going to need to be repaired. I mean, it's just a matter of time before there's going to be an accident or, because you don't have control going over those bumps. The second thing that I was really concerned about was...
So it just, so, Turnpike Street has been repaired at the lights. It just was done. The state just repaired that road.
At the lights of Target?
Turnpike and Page Street.
Yes, but I'm talking about, oh, Turnpike and Page? I was just there like two, three days ago. The bumps are there.
Well, the bumps that were there, they were almost a foot deep, have been repaired. That road has been redone and redone. I forget, what was the date? It was last fall?
That was like, two years ago.
Was that far back?
Yeah. The town actually paved that portion when Tom Fitzgerald was still superintendent.
So you're saying there's additional bumps there since the time that...
Yeah.
Okay.
And a lot of that is due to the truck weight. So I know that you've done the traffic, traffic study. I think, I see too that the numbers have changed a lot, so we're not really sure exactly who's going in and who's coming out. But one of the things that we just found out, I did a little bit of research on traffic, and Massachusetts owns the road all the way till Dunkin' Donuts?
I think that's correct.
So if that's the case, has Matt Dot, has Mass Dot been in contact?
Craig, can you answer that?
Mass Dot doesn't own that road to the Dunkin' Donuts intersection. So it's just beyond the Target intersection. They have control over the light at the top of Page. They're all coordinated, but the state highway layout ends before that, and the...
Okay. So say they go to the top of Page where the light is. So say they go to the top of Page where the light is, and then those trucks are going to be going down that other street, so then that's Stoughton, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if that's the case, I looked on their website, and it says, according to the website, they have transportation thresholds that trigger when a project will be required, that will require a product, I'm sorry. According to the website, they have transportation thresholds, and they will trigger when a project will, they will make a project get a permit from MassDOT, and it seems that this project qualifies. One of it would be a generation of 1,000 or more new daily trips, and construction of more than 150 parking spaces on a single location. And therefore, this, they're putting up 575, so they're over that. And if you have 500 cars, not even counting the trucks, if you have them coming in and out, that's more than 1,000 a day. And even if the daily trips is less, the project would, you know, project would have an impact on the traffic, a permit could still be required. Also, MassDOT wants to ensure, one of their things, if you read through the 44 pages of MassDOT, which I did, and I'm not an engineer, and I'm not saying that I am, but this is what I got out of it, MassDOT also wants to ensure there is no backup onto the highways. And I know that's one of the concerns of a lot of us people, because you come off 24 and the traffic light is like almost right there. If you have three tractor-trailers, they're going to block traffic, coming off 24, coming down the road, and MassDOT is going to want to know about it. They don't want that happening. So, and if they're in charge of syncing the lights, then they should be involved, and they're meeting the threshold of this project. So I would like to ask the board if they would consider the traffic study to be completed according to MassDOT's Project Development and Design Guidelines standards. And depending upon the number of trucks and cars going one way, it might even be required by law, so it needs to be looked into. I did put a call into them, but I wasn't able to talk to anyone. I just got, I was able to leave messages on machines, so I am waiting to hear back from them, but we want to be in compliance, so.
Can we just check with our traffic engineer on whether that part of it is in compliance with what we're doing?
I know that part of the project, I know that part of the project, they did contact MassDOT about whether or not it was a high crash site, but I don't think that there was anything else in the plans to say that they had talked to MassDOT to find out whether or not they needed to get a permit or not from them. Hi.
This stuff's confusing, I realize, and it's a little embarrassing, because I wrote those thresholds.
Oh, okay.
So I used to be in charge of environmental policy for the Commonwealth, now quite a long time ago, when we completely revised the MEPA process, which sets the thresholds that then, as you were just quoting them, roll into the state highway access permit requirements. We are not required to get one of those. It is, however, true that the traffic impact study conformed to the standards that Mass Highway, Mass DOT uses when it does review projects for permits, because that's just the nature of the professional engineer's responsibility. And it's also true that we will be coordinating with Mass Highway to the extent to which there is any work on their signal timing, but that does not require the kind of project specific permit of the sort that you're asking about. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. We'll also have our traffic engineer independently review what they're asking for.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Have you got the Celtics on on that?
What's that?
Have you got the Celtics on on that?
No, that's on the phone.
Are we winning?
I don't want to look at it. Peter Murphy, 60 Peters Drive. So, couple of easy questions here. How many of these trucks that will be registered in the town of Stoughton? Again, that comes down to excise tax or whatever. Any comments on that?
So the tax numbers we've given you are just for real property, ad valorem taxes. We have not included any excise taxes, so the taxes move from about $200,000 a year to about $2.5 billion. The actually, the greater excise tax for the town will likely be in the racking system, so these facilities have very sophisticated structural, non-structural to the building, but structural for the operations, the logistics facilities in them, which are very efficient, electronically controlled. They're also expensive pieces of equipment, and they are taxable. Those would belong typically to the tenants, but the taxes would come to the town. As to the vehicles themselves, I couldn't answer the question. I think it'd be all over the landscape, but the excise taxes for the racking systems and other building equipment is likely to be more substantial than even the truck traffic, truck excise tax revenue would be, even if they were predominantly registered here.
Okay. Then the next question, you talked about trees. Will there be any type of irrigation system for all those plantings? And what do you anticipate the water usage to be, and for how long?
Irrigation would be proposed for the onsite landscaping. We don't have, you know, numbers for you right now in terms of the water usage for that irrigation.
You must have someone in the engineering department that could figure out, if you plant X amount of trees, it's going to take X amount of gallons of water. So that's going to be part of your cost study.
In terms of this cost study for permitting?
No, right, as far as how much water will you consume just in irrigation to keep these plants going to maturity, to where they can sustain themselves?
So we do provide, we did provide as part of this permit, water usage rates and sewer usage rates. Typically, your sewer, your water usage rates are based off of, in part, your sewer usage rates. So those numbers were provided to the town engineer and the water superintendent for review.
But was that the water usage for the building or for the irrigation?
So typically, it would include, usually, we apply a multiplier to the sanitary flow calculation, which would take into account, you know, water usage for the building as well as irrigation. We just don't, I just don't, we just don't have an exact number separate for the irrigation itself. We just have an overall water usage number.
What I'm getting at is, I've seen multiple buildings built, they put in planting, and within a year, two years, they're all dead, wilted away because of they weren't taken care of. So, I mean, that, it's like, why bother putting the plants in if you're not going to take care of them?
As far as most of the projects in town, we require, Planning Board, at least since I've been on it, requires a cash bond for the first year to all the plantings take maturity, and that we know that everything's good. If it hasn't been good or has died within the first year, they need to replace it before that cash bond is released. So that would be the same thing with this project. All the landscaping would be covered under a cash bond until the point that it reaches a point where we know it's taken, and it's actually bloomed, usually about 12 months.
As a matter of fact, Peter, that solar farm right in your backyard, basically, their plantings, a lot of them died. They just had to replace a bunch of them in that year period. Just asking the question, because again, this is another concern for the town, where we have water needs, and at times that we've actually had to put, would have to monitor a cutback on outdoor watering. So my concern is, where this building's coming in to take care of the plants, there'd have to be some type of water, you know, water supply for these plants. Let's get to the crux of this. The big thing is the amount of cars coming into the neighborhood. And I mean the neighborhood, it's part of Turnpike Street, part of Pleasant Street, part of Page Street. And don't forget the, and as you know, Turnpike Street, the lower end. If there is an accident on 24 and traffic is backed up, I'm going to say the app incorrectly, Waze or something like that, that'll take all your car traffic off of 24 and sends it up Turnpike Street. So you have 500 employees coming down Turnpike Street. Now, you mentioned that on the Turnpike entrance, you're going to have a bridge there to keep trucks from going in there. So you're still going to have your employees coming in there. And I've seen on various projects, they'll put a gate, and it'll last about six months to a year, then they forget to close it. And that happened over by the BJ's Warehouse. There was a...
This isn't going to be a gate. It's going to be a structure that would not allow a large truck to get under it.
Okay, but it will allow cars to go under.
It'll allow cars to go under, yeah.
Right, so now, that's fine, because you just put cars on Turnpike Street coming from Brockton, coming straight up Turnpike Street to your facility. So my question is, what are you going to do for the neighbors down in that area where there are no sidewalks in that area? Are you going to take, have any concern for their safety issues? I hear dead silence, crickets. All right.
If you're asking me if I have personal empathy for people's situations, of course I do. If you're asking, are we building sidewalks far remote from our site? We don't happen to be. We are building sidewalks and making other roadway improvements on a number of locations after six months of conversation with the Planning Board. But please don't imply that we are unsympathetic to people's plights. That's not a fair comment.
Well, when I hear you say you will donate $50,000 for trees for the town, $50,000 to a project like this, I look at the people that you have sitting in this room every night that you're here, it's costing you a lot more than $50,000 for these people to show up. So don't, $50,000 is a drop in the bucket to this project.
$50,000 is an extra little dollop of icing on a very large cake in which our client is spending millions of dollars on improvements. Again, principally traffic-related, because that is the principal impact that occurs off the site for a project like this. But if the only thing we were doing was making a $50,000 donation, I would grant you, that would be rather stingy of us, but that's not at all what we're doing here.
No, but what you're doing on Page Street and getting your access into your property, that's for your benefit. That is not for the town's benefit, per se. That's for your trailer trucks to come rolling in there. Now, what happens is, on the backside, on Turnpike Street, you have 500 cars per shift, potentially, let's say a half of those, 250 cars coming down Turnpike Street that are going to get off at either Route 27, or they're going to get off at Central Street and come down there. There's probably going to be more cars also going through the IKEA, what's the project there in Avon?
Avon Industrial Park?
Avon, not the industrial park.
The Reebok?
The BJ's.
No, 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 where Christmas tree shop and all that, IKEA where.
Yeah, IKEA where.
Okay. I see more vehicles coming down that street, cutting through there. But again, they're going to come from Brockton, they're going to come from, not Brockton, but they're going to be coming from the south. So that's part of this project. You're bringing in something new to the neighborhood that you, in essence, are responsible for to mitigate for that. And if you to say that you have empathy, but you could, there's nothing you're going to do, that's not fair to the neighborhood, because this section of Stoughton is being built up industrial. There's a reason why you picked this piece of land, and it's a case of where it's to your benefit.
So on Page Street, to pick one particular example, is where our truck traffic's going to go. We will be responsible for 6% of the truck traffic, not the total traffic, the 6% of the truck traffic on Page Street. That kind of order of impact in both passenger vehicles and trucks is true for the entirety. It's a big project, but it's also a busy roadway system. That's all true. There's no doubt about it. And it is, I'm sorry, I got a little testy there, but my point was not that we're not doing things that are above and beyond what is directly necessary to allow our site and its access to function. We are doing quite a bit. We don't happen to be doing sidewalks in the area you're talking about, not because we don't care, but because that wasn't something that was identified during the process of our traffic consultants, discussions with the town's traffic consultants, and the five other hearings we've had before here, people didn't raise the topic. Doesn't mean we couldn't have done it, but we wouldn't have been able to do something else. It's true, people like me cost a lot of money, but each dollar they spend on me is a dollar that isn't available to spend on something else. So that's really, I can't give you a better answer than that. The answer is, we have to make choices, and the ones we've made do not happen to include sidewalks where you would like them to be.
So what I'm looking at is, does this sound familiar? We're not simply a partner to our communities, we are part of them. That means collaborating with the places where we work, customize development to meet the neighborhood's specific needs, and identify the highest and best use of each property, all while keeping each local community's best interest front and fore center. Does that sound familiar?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's from your website.
Yes.
All right. And to me...
And over the last six months in front of this board, I think we have and continue to do that, but we are not doing some of the very particular things, which you totally understandably would like us to do, but in the allocation of resources that we do have available. We don't have a bottomless checkbook, nobody does. We have to make the project work. And we've done what we think we can do in those areas that we were asked to pay attention to, not just by this board, but by the Conservation Commission, zoning board of appeals. We will also be in front of the Board of Selectmen because of some of the roadway issues, so there'll be another chance to have another conversation then. I'd be happy to. But it just is, we haven't happened to do the particular things you're talking about, because we haven't heard about them as being important, as important as some of the other things. That's all.
Well, we could go back and forth, and we can agree to disagree, but as far as I'm concerned, and I see the, you notice there's more neighbors here speaking up as opposed to other meetings, because this is actually slid under the radar. And I think a lot of that has to do with the town, the way that they publicize various projects. And to me, that's disappointing to me, as far as living in this town, the way that this here has been able to be sliding under the radar. There's things that you will bring to the neighborhood, but there's also, you know, good things as well as bad. And like I said, it's up to the town to start to realize, this whole area being down there, being developed, and you're part of it, a big part of it, it's a case of where the town has to step up to the plate and do something. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'll check the score.
It was 38, 37, 26.
Celtics?
46, 32 Celtics, the refresh. Yes, Celtics are up.
Mont Fox, 624 Pleasant Street, Precinct 1, Town Meeting Rep. This is just what he said. Communication is a big problem with this particular project, and probably many of the others. I make a proposal, and I mentioned, I remember hearing you saying that you were surprised one of the past meetings, that no more, that the neighbors weren't seen to be interested in, because nobody knew about it. I didn't know about this really until the end of April. So my suggestion is, if you want to have the community's input on this, email the precinct chairs that you want to have people show up. Tell them that the project's up there, and we need some talking. And it's easy to do, there's only eight people to send an email to, and they can email their representatives in the precinct. And from that, you're going to get a large representation of people who are interested in the town and what's going on in the town. You find that by, majority of the people sitting up here and speaking are town meeting reps. So I'm just saying as a suggestion, if you wish to have more input, email the town meeting rep chairs that it's happening, and they'll pass that along to the other town meeting reps.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Get you next. Richard Power, Echo Boulevard. Are you going to get a line item bond or just one bond for the whole project?
Excuse me?
Your bonding, do you go for a line item bond?
On the landscaping, it's a line item bond. On the landscaping, it's a line item bond.
What about the rest of the bond?
There is no other bond specifically for the entire project. We just deal with the landscape.
You're not going to get a bond for the road and the sidewalks or anything?
That's up to the, different bonding for when they're doing work in the road, that's different issues.
Yeah, I mean, typically before an occupancy permit is given to an applicant, we'll do a punch list of any unfinished items and quantify a dollar amount that goes along with that. And then we also calculate a landscaping bond, which is held for a minimum of one year. So the unfinished items, they can come off the bond as they're completed. So, you know, if they missed a section of curbing or didn't put a sign up or something like that, if they complete it later on, they can come off the bond and be released, but the landscaping's held for a year.
All right. I know in the past, when I was on the board, we voted one single bond, because what would happen was, they were line item certain things, and they would walk away from some of them. We voted to get a single bond for everything. And then every year, if it wasn't done, there was a 10% contingency, because everything went up. So we were always ahead with a bond. Say you put up $50,000 for a road and $10,000 for a sidewalk. They come in and do part of it. Meanwhile, the sidewalk goes up to cost 15,000, and they'd walk away from it and say, keep the 10,000, you do the work.
So part of the requirements of what we're putting in for what's being required by the planning board is that we're not going to allow them to have an occupancy permit without that work being completed. So it's not going to be putting up a bond to complete work. All the work is going to need to be completed prior to occupancy permit. So that's already been established as far as part of the requirements we're putting together. So the bond we're talking about mainly is a landscaping bond that, to make sure that things grow beyond, we're not looking for a completion bond as far as roadwork. Roadwork and those other types of things would be a separate bond if we were going to do it, but we're not allowing that in this particular case. The roadwork work would have to be done.
What about Page Street? Are you going to get a bond for that work?
They're going to do that work prior to their occupancy.
Okay. All right. And I talked to you about the water once before. Excuse me. The parking lots down the bottom are much lower than up top where the hill is. Now, where is that water going? Is it going across the street? Because you know we have a problem in that area. I got the state to come in and they hand dug the channel there. Now, I'm trying to get the town to finish it. That corner, Greg knows all about it. You know, where is the water and where the melting snow in those lower parking lots going? Because they are downhill from Page Street.
Yeah, so there's quite an extensive stormwater management system that's incorporated into this design. Some of the parking lots have a lot of low-impact development methods incorporated, so there's bio-retention and filtering and things for water quality. But what you really don't see here on this picture is the extensive subsurface stormwater management systems that are underneath the pavement. So they'll do the bulk of the mitigation, where they'll hold back the peak rates of flow, infiltrate it down to the groundwater table, and then release it slowly out to the surrounding site. We actually had a third-party peer review for this project as well for the stormwater as it went and got permitted through the Conservation Commission, so environmental partners. It's a consultant that the engineering department has worked with extensively for many years now, and we had them do a third-party review and work with the applicant to make sure that their design meets not only the DEP stormwater management regs, but also the town of Stoughton stormwater bylaw and regulations.
Okay. Page Street at one time was all single-family homes. They've slowly been chased out of there, and that's going to happen around the rest of the neighborhood. You have to consider the neighbors all around. You have the power to restrict the hours and restrict the days of use, and I hope you use them. I'd appreciate it, and I know a lot of my neighbors would too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Young lady in the back.
Just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, on the bonding issue. Brookfield's totally comfortable with the town's approach to all of this in March measure because Brookfield does not walk away from its obligations and does not plan on doing so here as to any aspect of this project onsite or offsite. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Kendall Bennett, 50, Conne Lane. Hi, Mr. Kelly. I just have a couple of questions, and I tried to watch as much of the previous meetings as I could, but you guys have really long meetings, so I might have missed a few things.
Sorry about that.
I'm contributing to it, so it's okay. Are there any concerns with the demolition of any of the current things that are on the site? Any environmental concerns or sort of care taken to that? Is there anything we should be worried about?
Bring that up to him.
No.
Great. Actually, you might want to stay. They're not mean questions, though.
Yes.
Do you have, are there any limitations on like the types of clients or tenants that your clients take? Is there anything, they are just in terms of like, you know, hazardous materials or anything that we should be thinking about?
No, this is going to be a conventional dry goods storage and handling facility.
Okay. And then with it being a 24-hour operation, does your client have any restrictions on tenants or provide their own like security for this space, just in terms of any sort of criminal activity happening, like parking lots and things like that that tends to be a popular spot?
Part of maintaining any class A commercial real estate facility involves appropriate security, including amongst others for anybody who works there or visits there. And I would expect that to be true here, too.
Okay, perfect. Actually, that's all my questions, and then I just have a few feelings, so I think you might be free. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate concerns about the noise, especially in the early morning hours. It actually, living near that area right now, it is already quite loud, depending on the weather in the morning, especially with the beeping sounds. And maybe Juan and I will put our minds together around some policy around jake breaking, because I do agree that's kind of a problem with noise pollution and things like that. So just something to keep in mind. And then the other thing is just, I would love to see, and I understand this is not sort of a responsibility of the people looking for the permits here, but keeping in mind that, you know, we do have some significant spaces on Turnpike Street and even a very small but very dangerous space on Pleasant Street that don't have sidewalks. And I know the town engineer stated that Pleasant Street was a very high priority, and they're working with OCPC to get some sidewalks in that last little spot there to at least improve the safety of that road. My wife was actually hit by a car while we were running on that street, so I do firsthand have seen how dangerous it can be. So anything that we can do as a town, I'll certainly do my part just to make sure that we're maintaining the safety with the increased traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again, Bob Mullin, 19, Clover Lane. My personal opinion, there's no way this project can be approved anytime soon. This traffic study, at least by my friend and engineer, picked out a lot of things that I saw the people at the town, employees, write down things. So can I ask what level of traffic study there is, this was? Because I know there's different levels that can be conducted by traffic analyses.
Yeah, absolutely, Bob.
Thank you.
I do like to take a lot of notes.
No, it's okay, me too. I've been working feverishly over here taking notes. Thank you.
No, I understand.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'd like to assure you that, you know, we had, not only did Brookfield have their own traffic engineer, you know, design the site according to what they thought were applicable standards, but we had our third-party review done as well.
Who was it? Can I just ask, who was that third party?
Absolutely, it was GPI.
GPI. You guys use GPI a lot.
We do.
Okay.
We do, we've worked with them for years, and we trust their judgment and their engineering.
We have a lot of concerns with their judgment on this report.
I understand that, and...
Because, you know, I tell you, Craig, there's a lot of trucks that go down 139, they turn on Central Street, and you know it's a tough turn. If you drive, if you live in the town, it's really tough. Trucks are getting to be unbearable in this town, and this traffic report doesn't even address those. You know, there's going to be about 400 or 500 trucks driving. I get a little excited a little because Page Street, I'm going to, I want to do some analysis on Page Street, but you have the CND facility with trucks. Trucks on Saturday line up, I try to put stuff in the dump there. It's dangerous driving in there, dangerous going down Page Street. You have the Amazon facility with trucks. You have 84 lumberyard that's coming before you, I think tonight or another time. That's a lumberyard that kind of just got in there, and they have trucks delivering lumber. You have BJ's Warehouse with other cars, other trucks, deliveries. You have the Avon Industrial Park. You have the Tofu Factory that's going to be opening up soon doing deliveries. And you also have the one or two hotels doing a build-out with other cars and occasional truck deliveries. So Page Street is becoming a highway for trucks. And I use that facetiously because there's not going to be anything like a highway. It's going to be bump of the bump of traffic up there, and all of North Stoughton will be changing because of this project. And of course, these other projects involved. So I'm saying, this traffic study doesn't go far enough.
I appreciate your...
Okay, go ahead.
But I'd like to also say that the traffic study has incorporated the existing traffic counts and the expected development along that stretch. So all of those projects that you noted, aside from the 84 lumber, because I don't think that they were aware that that was coming in, but there were other developments, the Milton Cat project, the hotel facility, and all the other...
So you're going to assure the residents that when we go to BJ's or, you know, anytime we go down there, that there's not going to be much traffic down that road?
There is traffic in that area, and there's no way that it's ever going to disappear. The study also examined a no-build situation, so there's analysis that if this project doesn't even happen, what does the traffic look like? So there's comparisons there as well. So it does factor in existing conditions and the proposed development. I'm not going to pretend to sit here and say, it's going to be great, everybody's going to fly through this section of town.
Do you live in Stoughton, Craig? I don't mean to throw you under the bus there.
No, I know, but I drive these roads, and I understand how they work.
It's frustrating when the trucks are...
I sit in that traffic as well.
Like, I go to Target a lot, and you get behind two trucks, two trailer trucks at those satellites that we discussed earlier, and that takes up the whole lane.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And so now when me...
This is a very congested area.
Right.
That's why we've had the experts look at it. We've looked at it, we've been in, I don't know how many meetings, discussing the pros and cons, what can we do to try to help this project have less of an impact. There's been a lot of mitigation that, ideas that have been put forth to Brookfield, and honestly, they've incorporated everything we've asked them to do.
Could we see that mitigation list at some time, too?
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely. We have a list of conditions that was generated by GPI, and that would be incorporated into the planning board decision if we eventually get there.
There's been GPI's decisions, there's also been the conditions that Craig has put together, this board has put together. And one thing Brookfield has been, has been very gracious as far as a client, to be able to make sure that what we're asking, that they've been returning and saying that they can get done. As far as your traffic concerns, Bob, I agree with you. When I first saw this project, one of the first things I said is, why are we bringing everything into Page Street? I didn't understand it. I was trying to figure out different traffic patterns to get around with the trucks so that we weren't pushing everything down Page Street, because I agree, it's, Page Street is becoming this highway. However, when you start looking at all of the other logistical areas to be able to get trucks in and out of this particular site, you start impacting more than, more residential areas and more other areas along Turnpike Street and Pleasant Street that in discussions we've had, previous meetings, that those areas didn't want to be impacted with trucks. So by limiting the car traffic into Turnpike Street and limiting the truck traffic onto Page Street, that's what we try to do as a mitigation for the site. And as far as they were concerned, they would go either way with what we wanted to do. We were trying to work it so that it was best for the town, and this was what came up. Now, whether traffic-wise, it's 100%, I don't think we're going to get to 100% of this traffic. I agree, that area is bad. It's going to be bad going forward either way.
Okay. Can I get back to you, Craig, for a minute? What level is this traffic report considered?
What level?
Yeah, there's different levels, like 1, 2, 3, 4, depending upon how wide it encompasses the areas. I would say this is a very high level. I don't know if there's, the traffic engineer is in the audience? I don't know if he, is there a certain level? Level number?
Not specifically the traffic study with, Maximo Polanco with Langley Engineering. The traffic study was based on the MAS DOT guidelines for this type of traffic, I would say for this type of impacts. So that's what we based that off. They are levels of, there's a minimal traffic assessment where basically we're just saying, hey, the traffic study doesn't generate more than X number of trips based on the existing, this is not going to expect or noticeably impact the area. But this is not what we did here. I would say like Craig explained, we went through the hurdles of not just collecting data, we added traffic from approved developments in the area. We grew the traffic, even though our analysis shows that traffic on Route 24 was a little bit declining, but we did grew the traffic, and it was grown seven years, in this case, just following MAS DOT guidelines.
Can I ask him a question through, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
How come you didn't look at all the way down 138, Central Street, the satellites there, Central Street and 139? Because trucks go all the way down there, and trucks will actually go all the way down to 139 into the center. I mean, the center is already congested. I mean, I don't understand, I really don't. Maybe I'm just, I don't have enough brain cells in my brain cavity or something to understand this, but trucks are everywhere in Stoughton now, and it's important to take a look at, the town should have a traffic study on just trucks, how one impacts our town. Trucks are everywhere now. I'm just wondering, because it's real important, trucks will go down, all the way down 139, past Dunkin' Donuts, all the way down, one satellite, they may go down to Turnpike Street, that will impact all the residents on Turnpike Street, because there's already truck facilities down there, and they're going to be going all the way down to Campanelli Drive. Amazon trucks already go down there, impacting all those people. This might be more, unless you have a plan to, say, trucks, you have to go out to 24. There's no way they're going to take a left onto 139.
So there is, this type of facilities, which like, I would say, I don't know if you've been in the meetings, but it's...
I've been at the main, March 9 meeting, which said, which I believe, I learned that they were still working on the traffic report, but this thing is dated January of 2023, so I don't see any changes.
In March, we were just discussing the conditions
Okay.
of what, that we always say we have agreed to do. Part of those conditions is that once the site is in occupancy, we will do counts to compare what was done for the traffic study or what was estimated for the traffic study itself and evaluate each intersection that we analyze.
Okay, now...
If we need to provide mitigation, discuss it with the town and come back.
How are you going to do mitigation after the fact?
It depends on the area, because, so that's what I wanted to explain.
Sure.
And this, we are basing this based on industry standards, that industry standards tells us the averages of many different sites where data is collected continuously, not 10 years ago. It's, this is a manual that, it's called the ITE Trip Generation Manual, and it gets updated probably every three years. The last time it was updated was two years ago, where it was updated mainly with a bunch of data from Amazon. So we are not proposing any type of Amazon, but nevertheless, the traffic analysis takes into account these type of facilities.
Okay.
So we don't have, this is basically main spec warehouse for large trailer trucks, not minimal, I would say. So it's basically in the part of the network...
Yeah, about 60 foot long, I believe? Is it around 60 feet?
60, 64, it could be up to 64.
Up to 60 what?
Up to 64.
64, okay.
So these facilities, because of the size of those trucks, Central Street, like you're saying, and past Pleasant Street, past Turnpike
Right.
will not accommodate those type of trucks. So usually, we would, I would say, we discussed this in the first of the meetings, that Dan Kelly was asking us, why are you anticipating to have 10% of the trucks coming from that way? And we would say, we would be insane just to tell you that no trucks is going to come that way. And that's why we decided for that, I would say, that percentage. That percentage is not something that we also came up with out of the blue. We look at census data, we look at where, I would say, work is coming from to the town and where workers going, and that's how we determine the... And that's how we determine the, I would say, the distribution of trucks and employees coming in and out.
Do you have the number, I apologize for interrupt. I'm just curious, because you're obviously knowledgeable of this whole area. Do you have the number of trucks that we currently have in that area?
Yes.
How many trucks a day? How many?
I, I don't, I don't know exactly, because obviously
Sure.
the numbers, but we can get you those numbers. I, I can tell you that, like RJ said, on Page Street.
Yeah.
The current number of trucks, we're just adding six percent to those current numbers. So if there's a, if, if our numbers is five hundred, five hundred just, it's basically six percent.
Right. So this facility, and I'm not, you know, I'm trying not to slam the, the client. Hey, I appreciate they coming to Stoughton. Stoughton's a great place to be. And I know that everybody wants to come to Stoughton now, because it's, it's a great location. It's in all these routes in Route twenty-four, ninety-five. Four ninety-five is just down the street. But the problem is, we're getting inundated with trucks.
Yep.
You know, this has a hundred, at least plus or minus a hundred and sixty loading docks.
Yes.
That means trucks.
Yep.
Plus a hundred and sixty-six additional trailer parking spaces.
Yes.
And what's the SU parking spaces mean? Do you, I don't know what that, there was something about.
Single, single unit, single unit, basically.
Just one trailer truck?
Single unit box truck.
A box truck, okay. Smaller than the sixty-foot or?
Yeah, it's thirty feet.
Okay, good. I didn't know that. Thank you for the information. So I mean, I'm just saying, there's a lot of vehicles coming into this area.
Sure.
People don't even, you know, see, the thing that, you're probably not from Stoughton, right?
No, no, I'm not.
Okay, okay. Welcome to Stoughton, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. But the problem is, we don't know, nobody in this town knows what's going, we don't, I shouldn't say nobody knows. It's unadvertised except for the, the planning board notice. You know, there's nothing on the town website regarding this in the planning board category. I checked again today. Nothing says projects on the review. I asked at the March ninth that something get posted on that location with at least the traffic reports and some other reports. But it's not your fault. I'm just saying, you know, and a previous speaker said, a lot of people don't know about this. It's too bad, because we'd like to welcome a new person, new company coming to our town, but three buildings in this small location with this number of vehicles, a little excessive, I think, in my opinion, my humble opinion.
And, and so for you to understand, and we've explained this to the board before.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand.
The way that these facilities operate, it's, they understand that they're gonna do impacts.
Right.
So what they do is specifically for employee shifts, because those are the bulk of people that are gonna come all at once.
Right.
They just, first, shifts are staggered, so they're not coming in and out. So there's not a shift that ends at five PM and another one that starts at five PM, you know? So they try to stagger those, like, okay, if a shift ends at five, the other one should become either, either before or after that shift, at least thirty minutes before or after.
So everybody won't be in the parking lot, coming and going at the same time?
They won't be in the parking lot, coming at the same time.
Okay.
That's the first thing. And that's the other reason why we have so many parking spaces, because we know that those are gonna come in, and the people are gonna need those parking spaces.
Right.
So the other thing is, to give you an idea, the client has another set of buildings similar to this. They only have six employees in one big two-hundred-thousand square foot, because most of it internally is robotic. So you're only getting the big trucks, they are delivering the, and, and the equipment. I don't know if you've ever seen, you know, one large facility of how the automation is.
No, I haven't.
It's crazy innovative.
Can I ask you something? What's your first name?
Maximo.
Maximo?
Yep.
I'm Bob. Can I ask you, get back to, I wanna like focus on Page Street for a second?
Yep.
Where that driveway is into the facility. From that point to the set of lights going up towards Target.
Yeah.
I wanna know how many trailer trucks can fit in there at a red light, because each one's sixty foot long. I mean, if you have twenty trucks, one of.
So, and that's another.
You guys measure that?
Another particular, yes. Another particular thing, when we do a traffic study, we not only take into account the existing trucks.
Right.
Because we measure the percentages, then we add the trucks that we are going to have. And particularly in this type of operations, like many people have said, which are twenty-four hours.
Right.
We are not expecting all those trucks to come in at once. If you look at the historical or the variation per hour.
Right.
The max number of trucks in a facility in an hour, it's between ten and twelve percent. So throughout the day, it's completely scattered. So you get a lot of one, two percent, three percent, four percent.
But it's all day long?
But it's all day long. It's continuous. It's true.
During the evening hours, too?
During the evening hours, correct. And our study takes into account the worst case of trucks, which is ten, twelve percent at that hour specific, which is the hour where commuters are coming into their houses when their people are getting out of school. So we evaluate seven to nine AM and four to six PM. That's why the traffic study is conducted in those specific hours, because those are the hours that is gonna be impacting the regular commuters the most.
Right. Now, are they gonna, well, I guess is the important point, you know, commuters from like six to maybe nine AM? Are we gonna prevent a lot of trucks coming out of this facility so they won't interfere with the commuters in the morning, going to work? And in the afternoon, are there's gonna be, you know, hours saying from three to six, you know, low impact?
It's nothing we've discussed yet at this point in time, and part of the reason is that the tenant, the owner is not the actual operator of the site. So it's, it's a little bit more difficult. So part of the reason that we put the conditions on the traffic report is that if anything changes from that traffic report, as far as what they're stating, then other mitigation factors have to come into play. And that may be just what you're saying. There's gonna be certain times of the day the truck traffic can't come or something along those lines. Maybe that's one of the mitigation factors that happen into it.
Maybe it should be, if you can, you know, tell us that it will be one of those factors, you know?
And one of the conditions. Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman. One of the conditions is that we have to prepare once of occupancy, a traffic demand management plan to mitigate those specific things that you're mentioning.
Is that gonna be at a public hearing, or is that gonna be behind the scenes?
Is what gonna be a public hearing?
Well, I mean, regarding the mitigation plans, I mean, the public should know about that.
If they have to go to mitigation, they would have to come back before the planning board, which would be another public hearing, coming back before the planning board. So yeah, as far as the conditions we're imposing. Now, there's conditions imposed by other people. The zoning board's been involved in this. The board of selectmen's been involved. The conservation people have been involved. We're just another piece of that puzzle. So what we do, and what we've said, if they have to come back before, yes, it would be another public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. I just have, thank you for the analysis.
Of course.
Report there. I just have a couple of other things. Looking at your guidelines, the development impact report, do we have one of those?
Yes.
Okay. Was, was anything waived in that?
I don't think anything was waived. No, I think they, they did the entire impact report, right?
Okay, is that available to the public?
Sure.
Is that gonna be on the website, or how do we get that?
Bill, can we get a, have a copy of that? I, we haven't put it up at this point in time for logistical reasons within the town, but I'm not sure whether it's finalized now, whether we could put it up if it's in an electronic format.
Is that supposed to also look at traffic impact assessment, exist, I can go through, I'm not gonna go through this whole list, but existing average daily traffic, pedestrian bicycle volumes during peak hours, identification of any pedestrian bicycle crossing issues onsite or offsite, analysis of average daily traffic and peak hours, blah, 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 blah.
The part of the, the traffic impact, I mean, the report you have is part of that impact statement. So we did a traffic report based upon part of that.
Yeah, but that, it's supposed to be also in the development impact report, too, I believe, according to what I'm reading here.
Which is part of that report, which is that report.
Part of the traffic report?
Right. A traffic report is part of that impact statement.
Okay, but shouldn't there also be a development impact report separately from this?
Sometimes with smaller projects, they'll incorporate some traffic statements into a development impact report. But with a project this large, the develop, the traffic report is its own separate document. And we, you know, we couple that together with the rest of the development impact report.
Okay. How about the environmental impact assessments? Have, have we done those? Has the town done those? And I know in the past, the last March ninth meeting, we talked a little bit about carbon footprint. Have we done any extra analysis on that? How much, you know, what, the truck impact, the heavy truck usage at this facility? The five hundred and seventy-six, seventy-two cars daily impacts, twenty-four-seven capacity? I mean, the number of trees doesn't seem to be gonna take up all that carbon up there.
Yeah, so, you know, a lot of that, the carbon calculations are sort of new science that's out there. The applicant has put together some calculations to show what their impact is and what the offset is for the vegetation. So the board has that.
Is there any independent analysis of that done?
The board hasn't requested an independent.
I would ask that the board consider requesting that, because, you know, we wanna be healthy in this town.
And that's part of the reason that we, we did ask them, when we did the carbon analysis, when, we did ask them to be doing additional planting in town. I actually asked them to do it as part of their project. It logistically couldn't be handled with the town, so that's why we've set up this gift that they, they've agreed to to be able to put into this revolving account, so that we can continue planting trees in the town and continue helping that out throughout the town. So that's one of the things that we've already asked for and have done.
Okay. All right. At this point in time, I think, I just don't have enough information that I'm still, to me, the jury's out on this. I just don't see how this can be, hopefully it's not gonna be approved this evening. I hope we have, continue with our public hearings, because people wanna know what's going on in our town. We're paying our taxes. Now, I know that the gentleman mentioned that they're probably bringing about two million dollars. But unless it's gonna hold up the line on our taxes or reduce our taxes, and I know it doesn't happen, but I mean, it's just, the, the budget would be just eating up that money. We're not gonna see it. But the residents will pay the price with heavy traffic, truck, truck traffic, heavy, more cars. And I guess one last thing I wanna ask about, where are all these cars? The five hundred, say this five hundred, let's say the four hundred cars coming one day, one shift. Are they gonna be routed to twenty-four? Are they gonna be allowed to go down one thirty-nine to Central Street and maybe go to other towns like Sharon and Foxborough? How are we gonna control that extra traffic? Because neighborhoods are already impacted already.
So, we can't control that. I mean, we don't, even as a planning board, we can't control how people are gonna drive.
Last part of the year.
We can't control how people are gonna drive around the town.
That's what I'm getting to.
Right. We can't control that. So it's not what we're looking to do. It's not part of our purview. I mean, part of our purview is how there's site access and the site circulation. But we don't have control of the roads. The board of selectmen have control of the roads in town. I've actually tried to work out different areas, and I told you this earlier, this was the board, went through several scenarios with them as far as different ways to bring the traffic in and around town, how that could get done. So we have had that already worked through. I'm not sure what else, as far as that particular item can go, that we can do as a board. If you, if you have a suggestion, I'm more than open to listen to it and to look at it, but I don't have, I haven't heard a concrete suggestion on what you're looking for us to do.
Well, I would ask that this board, consider asking the select board to consider a, first of all, a traffic impacts, a truck traffic impact study for the whole town. Because trucks are everywhere now, and also a traffic, how these new facilities are bringing in more vehicles. I mean, we're already inundated. How about the holidays? Target will have during the Christmas rush, it's gonna be, you can't even get a parking spot in there. So I mean, that's gonna be impactful to that area. Thank God, I'm just happy I don't live on the other side of Page Street and Ledgebrook area and everything, because coming out of those lights, trailer trucks, two trailer trucks at that light back up that traffic. You can't even get a left there. You have to wait. Now, I heard about that the last meeting. It's gonna be some type of magical queuing of the lights to push all those trucks through. But then it's gonna have, the other side is gonna, you know, coming from the south, from the center of the town, it's gonna stop all the pedestrian cars coming up here. So I don't know how this is all gonna work. Some magical queuing method is gonna happen, I guess. But I think you're gonna hear back from the residents on this, on this project. But thank you very much for indulging me with so much time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I hope you continue the public hearing. Thank you.
There's another gentleman would like to speak, so. Juan Fox, sixty-four Pleasant Street, Precinct One, Town Meeting Rep. It's been stated numerous times in front of the board that there's gonna be zero truck traffic from this facility going up Pleasant Street. It was stated by the traffic engineer just now, there's gonna be zero truck traffic expected coming up Pleasant Street. Yet the, the, the TIA specifically states ten percent. Ten percent is going, going there. That takes away from the, hold on, takes away from the calculation of, of the entire, the book for other intersections. So therefore, it changes the, the results in the book. So they're, they're stating that this is, is not gonna be, but the book said it is. Therefore, the book needs to be readdressed. The calculation needs to be readdressed with the zero. And, and on top of that is that how are they going to prevent truck traffic from coming up Pleasant Street on the, in their, into the facility? It's just stated that it is. But maybe it's gonna be a shortcut for folks who don't wanna come in through Turnpike Street. They're gonna come in a little bit further down and come up around. That's possible. But there's nothing stated that what is gonna happen to prevent that from occurring. So my, my base, that document needs to be readdressed, and I understand this GPI has done it. Maybe somebody needs to be talked to about attention to detail there. But it has, it's been stated, and if it was ten percent, then the doc, then the, the intersection that would be directly impacted by that increase in ten percent was excluded from this document. So there's, there's a problem with the document. And in an intersection, I'm talking about Central Street and Pleasant. The document is flawed because of that and should be readdressed to, to conform to what they're saying is actually gonna happen.
Thank you. If I could, Mr. Chairman, three things in response to the last two gentlemen. First off, I, I don't know what either Max or any of us said that gave the impression that there's not gonna be any truck traffic on Pleasant Street. There will not be any truck entrance or exit from the site on Turnpike Street.
I, I think I heard similar to what he had said. He did see, didn't anticipate truck traffic on Pleasant Street. It wouldn't be there, but because of the way that the calculations had to be done.
That's correct, that's correct.
They used ten percent as a placeholder on Pleasant Street. Okay, but his, his anticipation was that there wouldn't be truck traffic due to the way the, the street is and the way the traffic runs around town and the size of the vehicles they have. That was the statement that I heard, that I did hear him make.
Correct, but when coupled with the fact that we are assuming all risk, that this is wrong, it's just an assumption for modeling purposes, not a categorical statement that they won't be there. So if it happens that there are more or less, and it leads to a different pattern, as you know, then we'll be back in front of you. The other thing is just, coming back to a broader point, because I know the town staff works hard, and I just wanna be clear. It's often confusing if you're not in this business, but if you wanna be on top of what's going on in this town, I just went online and figured it out. You can get text or email notifications by board, by meeting, of PDF copies of all of your agendas. So if that's helpful to some citizens who didn't know that, I know you guys have set that up, and appreciate that. And then finally, fifty-eight, fifty, about halfway through the third quarter. Thank you.
Peter Murphy, sixty Peters Drive. In relation, in regards to the last statement, as far as finding things out online, they have just changed the town website two, three weeks ago, whatever. And I'm sure that you've noticed, if you've gone online, it's been challenging. It's not perfect. And there was a while that there wasn't information on there, because it hadn't been uploaded yet. So, again, getting back to this project being under the radar, it's been under the radar for six, seven months. One of the things is, and I'm gonna bring this up, I brought before the select board the comments about Maple Street and how dangerous that is to navigate that. And a member of the select board told me, oh, don't worry about it. The problem's gonna go away, but I can't say anything right now. So there are people that have very tight lips, but don't wanna talk to the people that live in this town. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just, I'd just like to respond to one of the previous speakers, too. I am, I do, I did sign up for the notify me part on the website, but it only told me about the, you know, the planning board agenda, which is great. But, you know, what's on the projects under review doesn't list anything for this project. I mean, I have to, they were nice enough to give me the traffic study, a copy of that, but I don't have anything else. I have to look for everything. It should be up on the website. Information, information's important. That's all I'm saying.
And we're, you know, unfortunately, we're as a board, we don't have control. I, I couldn't even ask for control of that website.
Well, you could. You could say, look, I need this up.
The mull, and I can't put, I can't do anything on that website. I have no way of adding or subtracting anything to the website. Up until less than a month ago, around a month ago, we did not have a full-time town planner. We had a part-time planner.
That's correct.
And we did not have the staff logistic, the, the staff to be able to logistically get everything up on site. So on several meetings, when this has been, I've asked, if we don't have it up on site, please go to the engineering department and get the information requested. There was nothing else I could do. We were. There was nothing else I could do. We were asked, actually asked one time, put everything we have up there. The concern of doing that was that stuff was changing, and they didn't want something up on the website that was in the process of changing, so they didn't want people to be looking at something that wasn't the correct thing. So that was the way we left it. So, to get the most up-to-date item, it was to go to the engineering department and pick that up. That's all we can ask to do. Before computers and before all this, that's what we all had to do anyways, so.
Right. Okay. Can we at least agree to get a couple of these pages up there? Just a page of something that, even the front cover of the traffic report that, hey, this is available at the engineering department, this is available, that's available, just come up.
Go ahead. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll work on getting those up with our.
You'll get everything up, okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I do appreciate.
I cannot get up the 300 pages of the plans, or they're like this.
Bill, I understand, but something should be up there.
The overall site plan and those sorts of things, there is limit to the file size that we can put up.
I understand.
So, I will, I will work.
Whatever you can do, it would be appreciative.
I will work on getting that up.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Limited.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody.
All right. So I just wanted to check on one thing. So, the noise. Now, they've stated that they have other sites. So they might, and that I assume that they're run 24 hours a day. You might have to answer more questions. Other sites that you have that are run, do you have other sites like this? Yes. So, are they all run 24 hours a day? Throw you to him.
All the facilities have different operating parameters, but many of them operate outside of hours that are consistent with how residential neighbors would like them to be run.
Okay. So do you have any sites right now that would be similar to where you want to put this in Stoughton with relation to houses all around it? And all, and they don't have it, those residents don't complain, and they don't have any trouble with the noise at night during the summer when you have your windows open?
So, first of, this is not surrounded by residential uses. If you look at the site plan, it's up there on, there now, and I think you know the area better than I do, almost, I think all the direct abutters are commercial or industrial uses, and even a tier or two away. There are, as you and your neighbors have pointed out, obviously there are people who live along the roads, the truck tracks would be going on, but there really aren't really adjacent to the site. It's also not a particularly noisy site, other than the truck traffic, which, again, it has the noise that trucks do have.
Okay. So is the, and I'm not sure about this. So, the gravel, are they taking over the gravel area?
The asphalt operation and the gravel operation, if it's on Turnpike Street, no.
All right. So we hear that in the morning. When it starts up, at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, whatever it is, we hear that noise immediately in the morning. When the people that are having the festival down at the Immaculate Conception, if the wind is blowing the right way on this section of town, I've called and said, what's going on? It's 11:00 at night, and I'm trying to go to sleep, and I'm listening to music. So it really all depends on the way that the wind's going to be blowing or whatever. If 20% of, when that other gentleman was up here talking about the traffic, that they're figuring 20%, I think he was saying, and I could be wrong, saying that 20% of the facility would be used on an hourly basis? Would that be great?
What are you trying to get at?
What I'm trying to get at is that, like, that would be 26 trucks every hour throughout the entire night, meaning that 26 trucks at 1, 26 trucks at 2. So it's all night long that we're going to be listening to all this noise.
It doesn't necessarily distribute it that way. But, yes, there, let's be clear, there will be vehicle trips on the roadways and within the site at hours you wish there wouldn't be. That's correct.
Okay. And somebody else from, that was in here tonight that was talking to, do you, as a planning board, have authority over that? Or not? Are you going to listen to the residents of Stoughton that are living in this area? I don't know if any of you guys are living in this area, but what are you going to do when they all start? Like, like, really? We can't, we're having trouble sleeping at night, because we're listening to all this noise. When it's a done deal, it's a done deal. So I'm just saying, please, please consider it now. If you were living in this area, you might not want a 24/7 right next door to you. Thank you for your consideration.
You're welcome.
Thank you for answering the questions.
Would anybody else like to speak at this time?
Jack Akla, Silver Glen Road. So, they're talking, the traffic study was, was, was going to break up the tractor-trailer truck. Basically, we have, what, 400 trucks roughly a day?
Whatever it says in the.
Yeah, what, you should know what that should be.
I'm just the lawyer. I don't know all the numbers.
I think we should know how many trucks should be in and out of there per day.
They talked about about 500 trucks.
Four or 500 trucks.
Yep.
Okay. If you put 20 trucks in there right now, at any time of rush hour, it's gridlock. Leaving, getting on 24, coming back, especially during rush hour, when people are getting in and out of work. If you have 400 trucks a day, I don't, in a 24-hour period, I mean, there's going to be, what, basically, what, a truck every 10 minutes?
So, Brookfield is the developer, and it's going to lease the facility to various tenants. And some of them will have their own drivers, and some of them will have third-party drivers. But every single one of those folks is always motivated in the exact same way, which is to minimize the amount of conflict between the arrival and delivery of those trucks with any other traffic, because that's how everyone makes their money in this business. Logistics operates by efficient delivery and handling. So if you're bringing your trucks in or out during the conventional rush hour, you are managing your facility poorly, not because you're a nice person, not because you care about the neighbors, not because you worry about somebody driving their car, but because it allows you to get your truck in and out and to where it needs to go and from where it needs to come as efficiently as you should be. So, the reason I say it that way is, no one should operate on the assumption that my, or Tyler's, or anybody else's good faith here is the reason it's going to make this work. The reason it's going to make it work is because everybody in this business has a direct economic and business incentive to do things that minimize these conflicts, because it hurts their business.
Right. Which is telling me, then, the time to run the trucks in and out of there are off-hours. And, I mean, that's a, you know, off-hours would be the time to do that. The other thing is, we really don't have a study, because we don't know the impact of the new buildings that are being built. Like I said, Caterpillar is a repair facility.
Those were included in the study.
Yeah. But you're guesstimating on what trucks are coming in and out. We have no idea how many trucks. It's a guesstimate, right? I mean, like I said, if we have 10 trucks coming off of 24.
Until a facility gets built, there's no way.
Exactly. Exactly. So.
Until a facility gets built.
I agree.
There's no way we know exactly. The only thing that they can do is run off of the standards that's required by Mastard and by the international standards for those types of facilities, which is what is normal for every building and everything that comes before us for traffic studies. That's the normal way that it's normally done. So I can't step, you know, into something else to say, do we know exactly? I don't.
Right. Right. That's what I'm saying. So how do we develop many, you know, many different facilities all at once, when we assume, and we're assuming that, you know, so say Caterpillar says, hey, we're going 24/7 now, too. You know what I mean? So, there's no figures on, on the traffic study if we, if we can't get one or two facilities up and running and then assess it later. I mean, you've got BJ's, you've got Amazon, 138 in Canton, where all the tractor-trailers were pulling over here, there, and everywhere. There's all stone there now. So the Amazon, because they couldn't get into the facility at a certain hour, they would pull over and sleep wherever they could. Now, which, you know, if they can't get in at a certain hour, or they're trying to delay people, where are the trucks going to go? Where are they going to park? They're going to park on the 24 and anywhere else they can get into.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the points you make are excellent ones. They are intrinsic in all permitting processes, all of which are based on model, predictive models about the future. In this instance, though, the board, a bit against our preferences, has made it so that if we are wrong in the ways you're talking about, we will come back, we will have to come back before them in order to look at new additional mitigation. So I agree with you that all the risks that you're talking about are possible, and they could break the wrong way, maybe having little to do with us. But we're willing to take the risk on that, again, because we think that's the appropriate thing to do, because it is a large project. And even though it may be 6% of the vehicle trips, it is a lot of vehicle trips. We know that.
Right. And I just like to say, once the, once the facility is up and running, there's no leverage to go back and change this road or that section of this, because they still, like you said, they're economically trying to make money. Basically, the more trucks they get in and out of there, the more money they make.
Right. But we've agreed to a condition that if that happens.
I agree.
Then we will come back to them, which is not the normal thing. And I don't need a pat on the head for it. It's just, it's just, that happens to be the reality. Your board has protected you against the risk you're worrying about, and our client has decided to take that risk on.
Right. So would that, what would that be? Shut the facility down and then reassess it?
We'd have to do a study.
Right. Right.
But, 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 yes, if you violate a condition of a planning board-issued entitlement, you do have the risk that if you don't comply, that you'll lose your certificate of occupancy.
Right.
It is facility, it wouldn't be relevant, but if you hadn't yet finished building your facility.
Right.
Then you'd lose your building permit.
Right. Well, I would, who would police the trucks coming in and out of there, then? We're going to have a guy standing on the corner checking trucks, or?
We have to have a count done that the town makes sure we do the right way.
I mean, who does?
Traffic engineers.
So there's traffic.
People, people who are certified traffic, professional engineers, traffic engineers, like Max.
Okay. But, no, he's.
I don't think we make Max stand on the corner, but.
No. But, so somebody has to take a number of how many trucks are going to be in and out. But we have no idea how many trucks are going in and out of there now.
Sure we do.
Well, not really, because Caterpillar's not open yet.
So we know what the existing traffic volumes are.
Right.
We know what the modeled volumes are for all, all uses proposed before us. We also know what growth factor we incorporate, even though, as Max pointed out, as it happens, some of the regional traffic, COVID and otherwise related perhaps, has been declining, but we nevertheless include it in, so this is a three-tiered set of data and analysis to get to a number. And then, on the basis of that, one makes decisions about what the mitigation is. So in theory, you're always overmitigating. As a practical matter, you don't always get that right, because the modeling isn't always precisely right, and that's where tweaks are needed. We were talking earlier, it often comes into the world of signal timing and the like, which isn't great and glorious, but is often really important and useful.
Right.
And so we would expect that to happen, too. But then, finally, if we do have a much more intensive use, or a more intensive use, I shouldn't say much more, more intensive use that leads to more traffic, then we would come back again in front of the board. And we're wholly at risk. They could tell us to do anything. And if we don't do it, we'd have to get the trips down. And if we didn't do that, as I said, the theoretic risk, which I have never encountered in my career, and I don't hope, hope to start anytime soon, is the revocation of a certificate of occupancy.
Right.
And we have, that risk is on us, not on you, and not on the board.
And it all, and, you know, the other thing, too, if we have a tractor breakdown, you know what I mean? There's so many different features. We, our roads are handling what we have, one-way traffic. So if we have a broken tractor-trailer on Page Street, basically, the city, the town is in gridlock. And, you know, you can't say that's not going to happen, because if, you know, just driving around, you can see things shut down everywhere. So I'd just like to consider that into some of the situation here.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
You keep talking about your client. My question is, who is your client? Who's moving into this facility?
Sorry. As I said at the outset, I'm counsel to Brookfield. So my client is Brookfield Properties, which has a subsidiary, which is the, would be owner of this site. They will have tenants. We do not know who those tenants are, and we won't for quite some time. We know what type they are, and for the type of tenants they are, given the way the buildings are being sized and configured, we have a pretty good sense of what impacts they'll have. And again, if we're wrong, then we have to come back, based on actual real-world traffic counts, then we'd have to come back to the board and have the risk that we'd have to do more mitigation, or we'd have to reduce the traffic down to the levels that are consistent with what was modeled.
So, going on your website, Brookfield has a big clientele. And again, what is the price tag of this project ballpark?
A lot.
Okay. 300 million?
It's a lot. I, I don't know.
Well, you must have some idea.
I don't, sitting here right now.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's got to be more than 100 million.
But, again, what do you want to get to?
What I'm saying.
Yes, we're investing a lot of money.
Right.
Zero doubt.
So with that, you must have potential clients that are going to move into there. You were not going to spend that kind of money in hopes that a client's going to come down the pike.
Sure, sure you do. That's what the real estate business is. You build, either build to suit or on spec. If you are like Brookfield, a player of international size and breadth, A, you have deep industry contacts, so you have a pretty good sense of what the tenant market tends to like, and you may be willing to take the risk of tenant, not until very close to when it's ready for occupancy, largely because you'll get a better pricing in your, in your lease. They also have the advantage when they're, as they are, a large publicly traded company, to have a lot of capital. So spending what, to you and me, at least to me, for sure, is an ungodly quantity of money on something where you don't know how you're going to make the money out of it. It's what people in their business do every day. And, and here. So the answer's no. We don't, really don't know.
Okay. I worked for a major pharmaceutical company, and again, same thing. They were worldwide, and they know what drugs to go after, which ones not to. Now, okay, we'll let that go for now. My other question is, during construction of this project, I think I heard at a previous meeting, you anticipated it being over five years. Is that somewhat right? Did I hear that correctly?
I think we expected an 18-month construction period.
So in, okay, in that 18 months, there's probably going to be a lot of traffic on all these roads to build this site.
There will be construction period traffic, which is different from the traffic in the final occupancy, yes.
Okay. Any idea what type of traffic that'll generate?
That's also, I believe, profiled in the, in the, is it, do we do traffic, do we do construction period separately?
So we do traffic management, construction.
Yeah, okay.
For the party. And depending on the facing of the project, how it's going to be built, then we can estimate how much traffic is going to be.
Okay. So that's something else that, for example, the Turnpike side of that project will be open to construction vehicles coming in, because number one, you get the asphalt plant right there. You're not going to have them go all the way around town, when they can just basically drive down 100 yards and run into your lot.
We're going to build the road off of Page Street as the first part of the project, to use that as our site access.
Okay. All right. Well, like I said, I think there's some consideration that what the neighbors are going to have to deal with as far as construction equipment coming onto the site. And again, that's probably more of a zoning issue than it is a planning board, or is a planning board issue.
It would be a planning board issue, not a zoning board issue. The zoning board's already approved the site.
All right. So as far as like, because as everybody knows, TF Edwards pulled a lot of rock out of that area. So they're going to be blasting, doing a lot of blasting. And the issue that we had when other facilities came in there was there was a restriction put on between 7:00 AM to, I believe it was 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM. They could not do the A blasting, or the, I'm not sure what they call it, when they go to break up rock. Constant hammering, because.
Part of our standard conditions would be that it's a 7:00 to 3:00 o'clock or 7:00 to 4:00 o'clock construction period. They don't allow, we don't allow overnight construction in the town. The town doesn't allow it anyway.
Well, no. What happened was when a certain client came in, they were going. Well, no, what happened was, when a certain client came in, they were going 24/7.
I understand, but part of our conditions would not allow that.
Okay, thank you.
As far as construction goes, okay?
Because what happens is, we could hear that, I'm on Peters Drive, which is on the other side of Central Street, we could hear that pounding rock-
Right.
All through the night for first couple of weeks, but, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Again, Juan Fox, 624 Pleasant Street.
Excuse me?
Juan Fox, 624 Pleasant Street, Town Meeting Rep for Precinct 1. Back to the TIA, it was later stated that it was a requirement to have 10% shown turning on Pleasant Street. If that's the case, and the requirement was there, then the, all the traffic is making that turn, going onto Pleasant Street, ends up on Central and Pleasant Street intersection. I mean, that should have been incorporated, because it's a direct, there's no off-streets, it's like it was right there. That should have been included in, so it's, the TIA is flawed there. If it's stated that, no, that we don't expect any traffic on the 10%, you know, that this was just because we had to do a calculation, that 10% is being taken away from the calculations of the other intersections, lowering the traffic in the other intersections, misrepresenting how much is actually gonna be there, based on their own estimates. Therefore, either way, the TIA is flawed and needs to be redone to include what is, what they feel is the correct traffic.
If I remember correctly, the intersection you're discussing, I'm not trying to defend them, I'm just trying to remember that when I, because I did go through this report pretty extensively, is kind of the end run of the areas that they, that they did, and it was like the last furthest out intersection that they did. So if they're saying the 10% is going there, they didn't take any traffic away from the other intersections, it would have already had to have gone through those-
No, it was 10% of all the traffic, that is listed as the total amount of traffic that, 10% of that.
Right, is gonna go there, but it has to get through the other intersections to get to that point.
No, that's coming directly from the, to and from the facility. At 10% turns-
Which intersection, Pleasant and Central, right now?
The 10% is Turnpike and Pleasant, we're talking about.
Turnpike and Pleasant.
And it shows on the diagrams that it's going to-
From that area, okay.
And it shows that it goes onto the, it makes a right turn onto Turnpike, and trucks and cars, and then makes a left turn onto Maple Street, that cuts across, then to merge onto Page Street, okay?
So what it's talking about is 10% of the, of the truck traffic, that they're anticipating going there?
Well, that's, that's what the document says.
Right, not 10% of all the truck, but 10% of the truck traffic.
No, truck and car, both.
10% of their traffic is going there?
Yes. That's what, that's what's stated on there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, we haven't misrepresented a thing. What we did was, we followed the Mass DOT and Institute of Traffic Engineers methodology for understanding spatial and temporal distribution, as well as volumes of traffic, based on existing counts and on conventional standards. Max has expressed an opinion, not just on this, but on other issues, that the results may be different in some way or another, including on this particular one. The gentleman sitting next to me is correct about that. But, as I said before, that does not mean that there is an error, even if we weren't misrepresenting, because the risk remains on us if we are wrong about that, given the condition which you, with the advice of your traffic consultant, are imposing upon us. We don't like that condition, by the way, just to be very clear, but I do think that the members of the community would be, it might help them to know that you guys have required that of us, precisely because you had the same set of considerations and concerns, maybe not around this particular 10%, but generally around how spatial and temporal distribution was modeled.
Whatever's being said about that, it is a fact, that in the calculations on the TIA, that 10% is being removed from other intersections in the results.
Okay, so, I'm not, I don't wanna get into a debate about it. I understand where you're coming from, and I understand where the client's coming from. Alls I would say is, we did put that statement, and we did make that requirement, that if something is wrong, or it's not part of their, their traffic report, that's up to them to mitigate that when, when that time comes. We changed, if we changed the traffic report, which they could do, but again, it's the same type of thing, it's a guess. Now, somebody could turn around and say, well, this intersection should be 10% more or 10% less. I'm not sure where we're gonna go, if we continue to go down, changing around the numbers. Because until we actually get it, and it's actually been stated by several people, we're not gonna know until it actually happens. I agree, we're not gonna know until it actually happens, and that's part of the reason that we add this, this particular condition into the report, to be able to say that if they're going to do something and it changes, it's up to them to fix that.
Well, if I can say that, since this thing is considering, it considers the timing of the, of the lights, so it's important for that. But to say that it's going to, at some time in the future, we'll handle that if it's fixed, how much of it is gonna be handled? We don't know. It's not listed as, oh, we're gonna fix it completely, which is, we're gonna address it in the future. You know, and there's no, I don't wanna go into the thing, the possibility of it not happening, because a fait accompli type of thing, but it's still, it's much better not to have that situation from the beginning, and have the full information that, what the calculation give us, right from the start.
But I guess, though, my question is, and you've stated it, and the Traffic Engineer stated, is that we don't, we're working off of a modeling diagram. We could change the model, it could come up with a different, different set of scenarios, but what happens if the model this time is correct and that one wasn't? We're the same, we're the same type of thing. We're just, we're going around in circles.
Well, not actually, because I was saying that the first part of it, is the 10% going down there, it falls it into an intersection that's not included in the calc, where if you did take, take it out, it changes the calc itself for the timing. So it changes the calculation.
Craig, I, none of us here are traffic engineers. We do have one gentleman who is, and I don't, I think we gotta stop the debate, for us to be able to debate what is correct and not correct in there. What I wanna do is have it brought before our traffic engineer, the questions he's having, have them do a statement on a report and bring it back at our next meeting. Really, that's the best thing I can do. I don't wanna get into another meeting, I didn't want to, but unless this board has another way of dealing with it right now, I'm not sure what to do. I mean, unless this traffic engineer can come up with his answers to this gentleman's questions, maybe that's what we can get to. Hour and a half, almost two and a half hours now, dealing with this, and I would like to be able to try to move on, and I'm not trying to rush it, but I've put a lot of time and effort into this. This board has put a lot of time enough into it, over, since last September, and I think it is, this whole community's put time into it. You're right, you asked for one specific intersection. I agree, so let's just hear from him.
I have something else to say, as well, on something.
The first thing I want to know, so, want to state, is that, as you all know, the site is currently operational. So, right now, there are trucks and cars coming into the site. When we collected data, that site was in operation, we did not reduce the traffic to say, oh, this traffic that is generating by the site, is not gonna be here no longer. We just added and added traffic. So the 10% that you're referring to, that we are not taking into account in other intersections, it's already taken into account by different methods and means. By the existing site, that is, we're not saying that it's just going to be reduced the traffic, we're just adding traffic. We never reduce traffic. So by just us stating that 10% of the traffic is going to be used, using that route, is just trying to be, or provide a conservative analysis.
Okay, conservatives, but yet, that still does not include that one intersection, that'd be impacted by any traffic change, the Pleasant, the Pleasant Street, Central Street.
But the thing is that you're stating 10%, but when you call those numbers of 10%, it's less than 17 vehicles going that way. So 17 vehicles, compared to the hundreds of vehicles that are going to the other intersections, that is not significant.
So is it stated that, that 10% or the 17 vehicles that are going down there, is not gonna impact that particular intersection? Why isn't that not stated?
17 vehicles should not be noticeably impacting any type of intersection, specifically on Pleasant Street or Turnpike Street, and those roads that handles thousands of vehicles a day.
Sure, but that, that particular, 10% of those, of that, that 10% is, are trucks?
No, no, those 10%, it's overall vehicles and-
Not in your document. Your document shows for cars, and another sheet for trucks.
But if you look, if you look at how many trucks are generated in an hour, it's less than 20. So 10% of 20 is two. And it's coming one in, one out. So we're talking about one truck going in, one truck going out.
Okay, so that, out of the 500 trips, that-
It's scattered throughout the day, 24 hours.
So you're saying that, that it's gonna be, 10% is like 20 trucks going up there? But still, comes down to, that intersection does not have a left turn lane. Any truck that ends up there blocks the traffic. So, I mean, it should be included in the calculation, because it is affected by any increase of the, of traffic from the facility.
Again, a noticeable impact in an intersection has to be at least more than 5%.
Well, this is-
5% of the total volumes of an intersection, so. We tried, I would say, everything that we did was per the towns, coordinated with the town, not only the distribution, but also every intersection that we analyzed, and it was agreed upon with the third-party reviewers. It was not only just us selecting, this is the intersections that we're gonna look at.
Okay, I have another statement to make.
Sure.
This is regards to, it may impact this, is that there has been complaints about Amazon traffic coming down York Street and into Page Street to get through that way. Neighbors out there are starting to complain about that. So, how are we gonna make sure that this is not going to be impacted by people taking shortcuts coming down York Street?
Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the statement, I wish, I wish I didn't have to make it, but I can't control the traffic on York Street and Page Street. I wish, I don't want the traffic going down there. I mean, that's a narrow road, the truck shouldn't go down there. It is a non-truck road.
Yeah.
It's stated by the town that way. The only way that's done is by police enforcement, and not by this planning board.
I'm just-
You know what I'm saying?
Statement out there to make it known that that's the reality there.
I agree, it's a problem, but I, you're seeing trucks go down that road, even for construction on site on that road, down that road, and then crutting across Indian Lane and going up York Street, which they do do, don't get me wrong, and they do it for construction. I hate to see it, because those roads are way too small, and that we shouldn't have it. But, again, it's a no-through trucking road, it has to be policed, like, nothing that this planning board can do, at this point. I mean, I'm sorry, but there is it. It's the selectmen's purview and the police department's purview.
Yeah, I just have to make-
No, I agree, I agree. All right. Is there any more from the town, from anybody from the town? Okay. So, right now before us, we had to continue public hearing for site plan review, for special permits for, under 6.1 for off-street parking and loading, and Section 6.4.1 for vegetation standards for the proposed development. We've heard additional testimony tonight. I'm asking you, as a client, would you want to continue this for another meeting, or you think we're ready for a vote tonight? Would you like us to go for a vote tonight?
We would like it to go to a vote tonight.
So it's gonna be three separate votes tonight, for the, the two special permits that we have going out there right now, and then the, the vote as far as the, the conditions. Up front, if we do do this vote tonight, we're gonna vote per the conditions that we have. However, those conditions will not be written, they will not be signed, it will be pushed off to another meeting until we've had a chance as a board, because we're gonna condition it on those conditions, and if something needs to get changed, we want a chance to review every condition that we've got on this, at this point in time.
We agree that thoroughness and thoughtfulness is absolutely incumbent, not just because of all we've done over the last six months, but also the many appropriate legitimate concerns we've heard from the neighbors tonight. So yes, of course, Mr. Chairman, that would be fine.
Several issues were brought up tonight from neighbors that hadn't been really brought up before. I just, I know the board heard, so I wanna know if there's anything, if the board wants to say anything beyond that, or have any discussions into that tonight. Go ahead.
Richard Terry, I am not ready to vote on this, because-
I can't, I can't hear your response.
I said, I am not ready to vote on this, because of the concerns that have been brought up regarding the traffic report. Specifically, specifically the gentleman who lives up at the top of Pleasant Street. I'm extremely familiar with that neck of the woods, although I live in West Stoughton.
Richard, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I'm very familiar with this entire part of the town, although I live in West Stoughton. And, right now, if we have 16 or 17 vehicles coming up on that every hour, 24/7, that intersection of Central and Pleasant is, is gonna be jammed. It is a tough section. The houses that live on that corner constantly get their fences knocked down.
I, Richard, I just-
And therefore, I think it's, it's incumbent for us to look at this traffic report a little harder, before we take any vote.
I, the 16 or 17, I believe, was per day, not per hour, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
I guess I'm saying, that's, that was the way I just heard it, just a few minutes ago.
The most important-
I wanna just make sure we have the facts I'll take from-
Thank you, thank you.
The most important thing, Mr. Chairman threw to Mr. Terry, your traffic engineer will tell you what Max just told everyone here, which is, when you don't have an increase above a certain percentage, regardless of the number of trips on a particular intersection, it doesn't necessarily warrant being included in traffic impact studies, a matter of the conventional traffic engineering. And that's because you always have to make choices about where the traffic's gonna go. And again, in this instance, you are requiring us to assume that risk. So you can add another month or so to our already year-long permitting process here, if you choose to. It's within your prerogative. But you're not going to learn anything that is going to change any element of your decision that's gonna do anything to protect any members of the community. What you're going to do, is you're going to confirm with your traffic consultants that they did a good job when they spent four months with us and your staff, in deep conversation, on multiple conference calls, in detail, going through page by page, and receiving 10-plus-page comment letters from them, to which, as the chairman pointed out earlier, we have responded by ultimately agreeing to every single request they or the town has made. So again, it is within your prerogative, but I would urge you, please, to understand that projects like this depend on getting through these processes efficiently. We haven't done that here, we're not even close to done with it yet. And it is, it is an important choice you're making, if you're pushing us back, and I hope that is helpful to you. It's not because we're trying to pull anything fast on you, we've done everything straight up, we've said yes to everything, we're still doing it here. I'm sorry that some of the neighbors, I do appreciate your comments about how, even though there is material available, that a lot more material should be available. I think that's a sensible one. But, again, we've been doing this for a long time, and we've been operating absolutely in good faith, and all the questions they're raised are totally appropriate questions, but they have been asked and answered multiple times by you, your staff, and your traffic engineers.
I appreciate your explanations, however, the current operations that are there now, asphalt plant and all the other adjoining businesses there, don't run 24/7. That's the premise of this particular site. Combine that with the traffic as we know it is now, I stand by, I'm not willing to vote on this tonight.
Did you have something to say, Paul?
Yes, included with your, the traffic review that we're gonna have, I would like to have some assessment of decibel studies, as far as trucks being in that, and what situations you may have had in other sites that you have, idling trucks, maybe recommendations of truck routes only, and backup beepers during off-hours, if there's any mitigation that's been done in other towns or facilities that you control.
Paul, do you have any questions?
There are standard decibel level measurements for all sorts of facilities that State DEP and others have. You could impose conditions on those, you don't need any more information from us, we would abide by all of them.
It should abide, too.
In fact, for that matter, we're required to abide by them, even if we aren't specifically told it, and we will.
Are you all still not ready to vote?
No. Maybe on the waivers, maybe on the waiver for the, a few, couple of things, but not a final vote.
We already voted on the-
Well, we voted on, we voted on one special permit, there's two other special permits to be voted on at this point, and then there's the overall site plan review. For the special permits, we would have to have at least four members of the board vote affirmative for each one of the special permits. affirmative for each one of the special permits. For the site plan review, we would need three members of the board to vote affirmative for the, for the special permit. So speaking on that, are you still willing to go forward for a vote?
I may be a lawyer, but I can count to five, and I can't get myself close enough to it, looking at the four, five of you, so. This is a problem. I got a problem. But if, if you're telling me I'm not going to get the vote, then I won't force you to take the vote.
I am not, I'm not telling you, I'm not telling you what to do or any way to do it.
No, no, I know you're not.
Yes, I'm instructing you as to where we are with this vote, with this right now. I can logistically do the site plan, I can logistically do the special permits separately if we would want, and then come back and we do it with the site plan review.
Nah.
It's up to you.
Nah, I think, I think, I think if you're not going to do them all, then we might as well put them off. Jesus. It's a long time to be coming in front of this, to have folks show up after six months. And again, I'm not diminishing or dismissing the legitimacy of their concerns, but you know, we put a lot of time and energy into this, and-
I'm sorry, right now, we're, we're, sir, I've, I agree that you've been a long time, listen, I want to just say something, please, okay? Because you've been a long time, but this town has put a lot of effort into this also, okay? Our engineers, our town departments, this board has put in, in a numerous amount of time and a million nights to deal with this.
You especially, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't agree more.
So, I, I agree that you've put in a lot of time. So I'm sorry that you're disappointed at where you are. There's been issues that just come up tonight that, for whatever reason, it's come up at the end. There's questions with the board members that have brought up. I can't tell them to vote affirmatively or negatively, that's up to them. That's why we have a five-member board. If there's people on here that, that are think differently than I do, then that's different way of doing it.
Totally understood, Mr. Chairman. My only-
I'm just trying to give you that point.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. And my only point is, there were no new issues raised tonight. They were raised by new voices, but they had all, they have all been asked and answered before. Again, principally related to the traffic things in conversations with your traffic engineers. So it's true, in front of the full board, they haven't necessarily been talked about as thoroughly as they have been in both those conversations and in the correspondence that you have seen. So I can understand that, but those are not new issues. And as to the noise levels, there are industry standards, that's what you'll get when we come back to you, is the recognition that there are standards related to both vehicular maneuvering, times of idling, as well as building systems, noise controls, all of which we will abide by. But again, we're happy to provide that information, but it won't change.
Can I ask a question, maybe we could put part of the noise issue to bed? And I, I can't deal with the, the truck jacking, jaking, or whatever, how they want to dispose it. But one thing we could talk about, and we could put in place with the board, and, you know, I don't know as far as logistically, but we could get into a no-idle situation in town so that we wouldn't have that, the idling trucks on the, on that site. And I think that could be something that we could work in, that would be some, a noise mitigation issue to some of the people in town.
Yeah, under 310 CMR 7.09 of the Massachusetts Code of Regulations, you can't idle a vehicle for longer than five minutes. Very few people, especially the commercial business, actually abide by that, but you're not allowed to idle a vehicle for more than five minutes under state law. If you want to include something in that, that would be fine. Again, it's just like the other noise things, there are norms and we're happy to abide by them.
Well, this, this is good information for, for the people that live around there. So, you know, whether it's standards or whatever, maybe there are some mitigations that you can do, as other client can do, to assure the residents around there that, you know, beyond the standard, this is what you're going to require at your site, perhaps. I mean, I, I don't know what the answers are either, and, you know, noise is noise, you know? And, you know, I, I live right down the street from there, I live on Turnpike Street, I see the traffic when it backs up, I, I don't, I don't even know who I approach to, to get a truck routes-only signs and, and, you know, start gearing. The, the area that you're, you're looking at is an industrial area. It, you know, it's, it's always had different things suggested to go in there, and I don't think we're going to get around that, but as a town, there are things that we need to do to, to, to really control these issues. Those are, those are big issues for the residents that are close by.
As to the site, I think we have done a lot of things-
I think you've done an excellent job so far, but-
That are designed to contain sound within the site. If you look at the arrangement of the buildings, for example, between the topmost and the middle building, and you can see there is, the loading is located internally, not on the exterior, because that would obviously-
But, but these, this is information that we need to know and, and the neighbors need to know, you know what I mean? A lot of this stuff is just, you know, stuff that you know, you know, this is the standard and stuff like that. But I think maybe the next step is to like, present it and, you know, and we can take it for what it is. I don't know, I mean, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough call.
It was a long, long time ago when we first were in front of you, but we talked about it at length in our early hearings.
You know, there's a reason why we had peer review studies too, because none of us up here are traffic experts or any of this. Our engineers are very good, we all have our unique abilities on the board, and we rely on these peer reviews. And the client pays for the peer review, that doesn't come out of the town's pocket. So I think we should be moving forward with this tonight, and I'm disappointed.
I was ready to take a vote in this thing, and I think we could take a vote on it, but I'm just, I've got two members that seem to be very concerned right now about certain things. I'm not sure what you can do, if there's anything else can be said at this point, or where we can go forward, but-
Well, what you could do, Mr. Chairman, I, I wouldn't like it as much as what I was hoping you would do, but you could do, is you could close the hearing, because you don't need any new information from us in order to address these issues. All you need to do is consult with your traffic engineer, but then not take the vote, because you'd need to be satisfied as to that, as you're fashioning the conditions. That may be more comfortable, unless the questions raised tonight about the 17 trips at the unstudied intersection are enough to kill the project and people want to vote no, then please don't vote tonight. But if you're willing to vote yes, and you're worried that the conditions need to be thorough enough, I think you can do that by closing tonight and then not voting until you're ready with the conditions, as opposed to voting and then developing the conditions, because you could get your traffic, traffic consultant input, just like your staff input, without having the hearing be open.
Yes, sir, you're jumping up and down.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Who pays for the, the traffic study?
We did-
They're developing-
We paid for our traffic study and we paid for yours.
Okay, and there are two separate identities?
Two separate identities, yeah. You guys use GPI routinely, I guess.
Okay. So is the man here tonight representing you?
That's our guy.
Our guy.
That's our guy.
Where is our guy?
He's at Wangin Engineering.
He was at other-
Yeah, where is our guy?
He was at, or she was at a couple of different other meetings that we had had earlier in the session when we discussed traffic.
Right.
Very lengthy.
Yeah, I think the big thing tonight is we really don't know the traffic study because of the existing buildings that are being built there. There's buildings being built there that is going to, you, you, you keep saying we're estimating, and, and everyone's, there's-
I understand something.
Right.
We can't, we would never get a project built if you waited for everything else to get built around it, because the, the other projects couldn't get built either.
I agree.
It's rude to go on first, one second. No, I'm not trying to get upset, but now we've been three hours discussing, and we've discussed this for six meetings before this. I'm not trying to discount what you're saying.
Right.
What I am trying to say is that there has to be standards.
Right.
Paul was very, you know, very point, and I think he was right.
Right.
Is that we have a lot of engineers in this town that are looking at this.
Right.
Not just us.
Right. Well, it's, I just feel, I feel left out for the past six meetings, because I, you know, town reps, a lot of the people didn't know anything about this.
We've advertised-
Okay, I understand that, okay, I understand that, but if a town rep doesn't know about it, there's a problem. They're representing us.
But right, but the, understand something, this, the way we advertise in this town-
Yep.
Since I've been here in this town since 1985.
Okay.
Okay, has not changed.
Okay.
It gets put out in the local papers, it gets done that way, it gets notified of all the abudders in town, that's what was done, these people notified all their abudders in 300 feet. So people in town, I know were notified.
Okay.
It was people that was adjacent to this site that I know were notified. So I don't, I mean, I understand the problem that, right now, everybody's not on the communication level that maybe we think we should be in today's day and age, but the notification, every other board in this town notifies people the same way.
Well, okay.
I'm-
There's flaws in all of that, because tonight we had a few gentlemen say that we couldn't get the information.
You could, you, I, there was, the information's at the engineering department.
Okay, that's fine.
They couldn't get it onsite, online, but they could get it at the engineering department.
Okay.
There was nothing stopping them from doing it.
No, that's fine, I have-
So I mean, my point is, is that all of this type of stuff that you're saying, I didn't know, if you're a town meeting rep, then you know how to get information, that's why you're a town meeting rep.
Right, right, right.
Okay? So I don't know why you're sitting here saying I couldn't get information. It's here, it's there, it's available, it's been available. But that kind of, and I don't mean to be frustrating as a chairman of the board, but it does frustrate me when people sit here and say, "I didn't know," or "I wasn't notified," or any other types of things, because there is legal notifications we have to put out as a board.
Right, I agree.
Put those legal notifications out.
I totally agree.
And the agenda is put up every week that we have a meeting. So I'm not sure where the breakdown of communication is, but people not notifying us, we did notify. Well, the board, the developers notified, and the board notified, so it keeps coming back to us as if we didn't notify, but there is any other board in town that notifies anybody any different, whether it's the Board of Sleckman, the CONCOM, the board, the zoning board, or any, the Board of Health, anybody else, all do the same notifications. But it seems like all the time it's coming here that we're not notifying people, and that's not true.
And this went to conservation and to-
Zoning.
Zoning.
So it's been through a zoning board, it's right.
Prior, before it even comes to us. Right, right. And there were notifications for that as well.
So I don't know how you guys didn't know about it, with two other boards that sat, that just sat in front of two other boards before it even got to us.
Right, right. Well, I just think that the, the impact of the situation of different companies coming in here, it's not going to get better, we can, we can all agree on that.
I agree.
Traffic is not going to get better, it's going to get worse. And if, right now, like I said, coming in and off of 24, if we have, the roads are not big enough to handle tractor trailers if somebody breaks down, and we kind of got to assume that, you know, we can't live in a perfect world where everything's flowing like, you know, nuts and honey. It happens now, you get a tractor trailer that the lights stalled, and you're sitting out on 24, trying to get off 24. And we're going to, we're going to add 400 more trucks to the area. But stuff happens. I understand stuff happens, I understand that.
There's a couple of things I do want to say about this, to this project as an overall. This was before a zoning board, for the height and for the density of three buildings being on the site. Zoning board approved that. The industry zone, the, the industrial zone in this area allows them to have this use. So they, they're allowed to be put in. So prior to getting to this board, this area was zoned industrial, which allowed it, the zoning board allowed three buildings to be on this site and allowed the height of these buildings, the height that they add to be here. And so the operation is, is nothing to do, this, this operation can't be changed or anything else with this board. All, all we're dealing with in this board right now is the logistics of how the site is being used, what's going to happen as far as the circulation within the site, what we can ask the applicant to be able to help us with, because they get to be accessing site and roads to be able to deal with that site circulation, which we are doing, and to deal with the safety, which we have been done, and we are, we've gone through all those items. There's two special permits that they're asking, because of this off-street loading and because of the types of project it is, it, it needs some relief on a couple of the zoning articles within the project for the size. But this project is a by-right project for this area. So it's what it is, it's an industrial zone project.
It is, is that for 24/7 too?
The 24/7 is, is, is requirement, is nothing in the zoning code that we have purview over that says they know 24/7 business. There's 24/7 business in this town all over, there's people that operate 24/7, there's nothing that says they can't. We can, we limit construction time, can we limit it 24/7? But this is logistics of the building that they're coming in. So I, I mean, unfortunately, that's, that's where we're at. I mean, nothing, there's nothing in here that we can't, that has, hasn't either already been previously decided, or that isn't part of the code that this town has already approved.
Right. Well, it's, it's, it's hard to fathom also, is if you can't tell me who's going to be moving in there. I know they're trucking companies, but I mean, if the facility sits vacant for a year and they're looking for people, does that mean hazardous waste, or, you know, you know-
Again, that would be a change of use.
Right, okay.
It's a change of use-
You know, propane, uh-
Again, all of that-
Things were all reviewed before.
For what we're doing, and if they do go to those uses, they have to come back before us and planning board.
It's just dry goods storage warehouse. I know you do, Mr. Chairman.
Right, but they've come before us under a particular use, and I've done everything I can to make sure that the wording that we're using within the order conditions limits it to that particular use. I weren't, I got educated, believe me, on the uses of warehouses that I didn't know about during this project, and it was great, it was great information, it was a great way to do it, but it was the way that we ended up taking this project to go forward. But that was how we were able to do some sort of controls as to what was going to happen within this project.
Right. Well, it just seemed like there's a lot of concerns on the traffic, and I'm disappointed that we didn't have our, our side consultant on the traffic study here tonight, because I think he would have been, you know, we could have patted his back a little bit, you know what I'm saying? Coming up with questions for our side, so I'm, you know, he defended them, we have nobody to defend us. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I take a little offense to that, we did have a traffic engineer on our side, and they spent a lot of time going through that traffic report, so I don't believe that, to say that you didn't have anything on your side is not a true statement, sir.
Can I just add one thing, I'd be very appreciative. We appreciate all the time you put into this, but, but don't forget, we're laypeople, you know, the planning board agenda does get posted on the website.
Sir, I, the legal notice, there's nothing I can do about that.
I know that.
That's what you're-
That's what's required.
You people set it up, the laws of the state-
I didn't set it up.
No, I'm sorry, the laws in the state and the laws in this town require us to do things a certain way. You're a town meeting rep, if you want to change something, go right ahead, but I-
I'll, I'm suggesting, maybe you can put the ad in the suburban shopper too. I mean, other-
Sir, I-
You could do that too if you wanted to.
We do it by the legal ways that we're doing it.
Yeah, you have to, you have to do the, the newspaper, I understand that, 14 days out or something before the hearing, I understand that, twice, two consecutive weeks in a row, for two consecutive weeks. But you can also put the ad in the suburban shopper too, and you can put some information on the town, as we mentioned, I don't want to go down that road again, on the planning board website about the case, that's all I'm saying. More information put out there, we all working together for the benefit of the town. Sorry, you know, you have to, you know, hear how we, you know, we, we just, a lot of people just heard about this, this week. Work gets out, takes some time, I won't go any further like that, but Patriot Ledger is on a big circulation, circulation in Stoughton. I don't know why you don't do the Brock enterprise. Why, I know why, because it costs more money. And I know why you don't put it in the suburban shopper, but it costs more money. But that's what the people in Stoughton read. You know, I just want to say that. I mean, why hurt the residents? You know, I, you know, you're shaming us for not knowing.
I'm not, sir, I'm not trying to shame you, just that it does frustrate me when...
I'm sure it does.
When town meeting reps come to me and say, I didn't know about it. Neighbors get notified. 300, you know, the...
Just the neighbors. But everybody along Pleasant Street didn't.
No, no, but that's the requirement for what is in the town.
I understand. Just the minimum requirements. But we should go beyond that, because we're all in the same town. We all live here. We're all working together for the common good.
Again, we have to, there's a certain law we have to follow, and that's where we're at. Yes, Mr.?
I won't take any more time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, Joe McChrisky from the Select Board.
Microphone.
Everybody, boys. What's that?
Microphone.
Microphone.
Okay, hand him.
Joe McChrisky from Stoughton, 78 Winter Street, member of the Select Board. Couple things that I just wanted to bring up. Mr. Gito, about a year and a half ago, started talking about the website. Website has been consistently being updated. We went to a newer system because we found out that the old system had been maxed out. So we couldn't put as much. We went to a new format now that's going to allow us to do more, but they're just starting that implementation process. Everything has to be brought over. There's new documents that have to. So the website has been consistently being updated for about a year and a half now. I, I understand on the traffic issues. I know a little bit more about traffic. It's my job to know that. Those of you who have been active in years past, I was the one that petitioned Mass Highway, I believe, 15 years ago, to try to cut Turnpike Street basically in half. Mr. Murphy may remember that, when we tried to cut that off at Barnes Road. Chet Collins will remember it. Mass Highway overruled it. Mass Highway recognizes Turnpike Street as a relief valve for 24. They said it. And because of that, they turned it down. Twice in my 100 years, going back to 92, we've tried to do truck exclusions. Mass Highway overrules them. So it's not that it's not being done. The attorney here mentions a part of the code of Massachusetts regulation, CMR. I do truck compliance for a living. That's a true statement. The police can and have in Stoughton on the Amazon trucks written tickets for the violation of the CMR codes. Okay? I understand, and as I said, this has been advertised in accordance with the law, with accordance with the open meeting law. I've missed meetings because I forgot about them. You know, I like to come to as much as I can. I go to a lot of zoning board meetings. I go to a lot of planning board meetings. It seems that some of the comments I've heard tonight is we're penalizing this petitioner because things are getting out of control in Stoughton. As many may know, town meeting reps, we just voted an article at town meeting because of the trucks that are on Walnut Street. Trucks are going to find a way to go if they want to. We can't put truck exclusions on the roads. We can't limit hours of operations unless it's a special reason that you're doing it. Because you cannot, general laws in Massachusetts and federal laws don't allow you to ban interstate commerce. Now, I don't know all the details of this. I know only from what we're talking about. At the Select Board level is the amount of traffic that's on Page Street is coming from Avon. It's coming from Avon. Mr. Perlmutter, remember when the CND plant went in? Avon was concerned saying that if the town is gonna, if a particular town is going to be the truck route like Avon was for that, they wanted a share in the revenue of the facility. I stood up in front of a state senator and the administrator of DEP of Massachusetts, and I said, I couldn't agree with my colleagues from the town of Avon more. So when they split some of their revenue for the massive traffic they're putting through our town, I'll throw in our 5% because we're going to get 3, 15 times that. So we can't fix what's happening. Anyone who's lived here long, born and raised, and I know there are other people here as well, all over, go to Park Street, go to Sumner Street. There are people that are bypassing 138, coming down Sumner Street, jumping on Park Street. Look at just the traffic that queues up on Park Street, coming in from Brockton. That has nothing to do with this. Traffic is increasing everywhere in this town. You know, and that's not something we can fix. Look at, look at the, look at the footprint of the town. Look at how the town looks versus how it looked 10 years ago. There are a lot of people who have said to me, what's happening? I say the probably, and, and, you know, we didn't know at the time, is that this started to change when we got the water connection, back about 15 years ago, when we did away with our water ban. People could do whatever they wanted. Two-family houses became three families. Garages became in-law apartments. Because before, under the water declaration, a developer had to save four gallons for everyone they were going to use. They couldn't do it. Now we have enough water. We're building. There are houses going in right around, talk about Pleasant Street. Juan's neighbor, they took out a mountain of stone to put in two houses. I don't know how they could afford to do that. But again, this has been a vetted project. This, this developer has gone above and beyond. And it is sad, I feel bad that, you know, I don't know what we could do if somebody's not looking to the website. That's all we have now. The public notices that go out in accordance with the law, our website. But, you know, it always ends up being word of mouth, but it's always too late. We did this just with a similar project that everybody seemed to find out things, unfortunately, a lot of it wasn't true, but we had meetings and it was this type of stuff. So, I mean, it's, for the neighborhoods that are there, for basically a 6% increase in traffic isn't noticeable on Page Street. If we're going to talk about doing something with Page Street, and I have spoken to one of my colleagues in Avon about doing some kind of a joint rule that, you know, try to get the legislature to vote funds to design Page Street a little wider, to do sidewalks. Sidewalks are only pushed, I think there's maybe two residences, if that, now on Page Street, three maybe. And we're looking at, you know, try to do something between the town of Avon and town of Stoughton. Have all of the representatives do that, vote that as a capital item through the legislature. That's just the discussions. Something was brought up just recently about the traffic from Amazon. If anybody's been watching the traffic in Amazon, it's down probably 70%, 75% from what it used to be. I was a person, and I don't know, Peter, who made that comment to you. It might have been me, but it came true. Because what we did is we started to tell Amazon that they're violating the agreement they had with the town of Stoughton, because there was never supposed to be transportation like that here. So the TIF that they got, they were in violation of it, and we pointed it out. And I believe, I probably would have said that, because if I go say we're going to go threaten their TIF, you know, that's, that's illegal to do. All we did was point out what was obvious. The signed TIF didn't recognize transportation to be there. That's why you see such a decrease. So we're making headway. We're trying to do the right thing in this town, like all of you. I live here. I raised my kids here. One of my kids has a career in this town. I'm not, the only way I'm going out of here is I'm being moved from here to across the street from the town spa. That's where all I'm going to be going. You know, so I, I just wanted to bring those up. I sympathize with some of the comments that were made, but, you know, when somebody says it's been, you know, hidden, I don't know what the words were, and low, they put low in, and, and, you know, that wasn't the case at all. That wasn't the case at all. You know, and I would be the first to scream and yell if that were the case. But everything was advertised, done in accordance. We can do this. We did similar with the, the fire station project. Some people were here, where at the 11th hour, when everything was done, they wanted to change everything, after it had all been vetted. You know, I can say, only speaking for me, I sat on this board for, I'm in my 20th year, and I've never broken my word. We're going to do what's right for the residents. If something needs to be done, we're going to bring these people in. They still have to come to the Select Board, you know, for approvals on the roadway. We're going to make sure it's designed so it's not an obstruction. And if, we'll say when it first happened, I don't know if it was the first conversation with Mr. Lyman, that it was a brief conversation about this project. And I'll say, what I said to you was, that's not going to happen.
We did.
Okay, that's not going to happen. The original plan showed all the truck traffic on Turnpike Street. And I said again, if you do that, you will have a crowd of people like you've never dreamed before. Didn't I, didn't I say that?
We did.
Okay, so this isn't something that's just been snuck through and low and handled. It's been talked about. And I believe that this, the way this plan is, that it can work. And the money, we talk about the money. $2. something million a year, doesn't tax our schools, doesn't tax our fire department. I mean, that's money, as Mr. Mullins said, right into the budget. Now, are we going to get a tax break? No, because our budget goes up every year. You know, it would be nice if we could say, hey, we got $2.7 million or whatever it is, everybody gets a $10 decrease in taxes. But I just wanted to give my thought. It's up to the planning board how they vote, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that was said from my knowledge. Yeah.
Was the decision to ban them or...
Didn't ban them.
I know, two more minutes.
Yeah. I will talk to you after that. That's not a part of this meeting.
Stop, stop.
My name was mentioned. I'd like to say something in regards to that.
One thing, and that's it. Please. Go ahead. So what you going to say?
Mr. McChrisky, back in last, sometime last year, I brought before the Select Board the issue of Maple Street being a complete dangerous hazard. You were the one that told me that, don't worry about it. Things will get fixed. Don't worry about it. You knew about this project back...
No, I did not. I did know about, not know about this project when I spoke to you about that, because I was talking to Amazon. Okay, so that's not true. When I spoke to you, I was talking to Amazon. I had made a call to the state to find out, can the Select Board pull a tax incentive finance agreement if we feel that it's not being upheld? I was told yes. So that's when the conversation took place between the people at Amazon. I don't know what they did, but that traffic, those trailers that were in that lot are down about 70%. I don't count them, but it's noticeable. That's why it happened. So no, that's not a correct statement. It is incorrect, totally incorrect, for you to say to me that I knew about this then. That's not true. You don't have anything there. So don't, don't do that to me. I'm just trying to be upfront.
Thank you. Put it down, please. We're done.
I'm done.
Oh, one more thing. Celtics won.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask one more time. Are we ready to take a vote? Are you prepared to take a vote tonight or not?
I would like to consider your recommendation.
I, I didn't hear, I can't hear you. Your thing is none. I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm not ready to take a vote tonight. I would like to take this gentleman's recommendation, is close the meeting, and we figure out what kind of conditions, or what did we miss, or what do these gentlemen know about traffic that needs to be understood better. I don't want to cause these people to, you know, miss out on something that is by right, a zoning right, but I think it's imperative that we give every consideration to the neighbors who live in that area.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Close the night out and...
That's it.
Come back at another time and, and resolve some of the questions the neighbors brought up.
If we close the meeting, there's only going to be logistics of, of one or two items that they're going to be talking about, and there'll be no public input at that point in time. Once we close the meeting, we no more public input than also the response that you're having on two different items, which would be the couple of items on traffic and the issue with sound. We close the meeting, when we bring them back, they talk about those two particular issues, or we have that presented to us prior to that, by, you know, they can get us information by email or whatever, and then we can present that at the meeting. But there will be no public input once we close the meeting. That's just so you understand that, that's where we're at once we close the meeting.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
Okay. So do you have a motion to that?
Yeah. Motion is to close the meeting.
And hold off the vote till the next meeting.
Thank you. And hold off the vote till the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? You're opposed. So it's four, four, four and one opposed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very, very much. I know this has been a long evening for everyone, including some of the citizens. I know I and some others on our side got a little testy, and I apologize to everybody for that. I appreciate your attention.
Nothing to apologize for. Thank you.
The next meeting we have is a continued public hearing to be held in addition to the applicant of Best Price Signs and Printing Corp., Liberty Street, Suite 8, Brockton, and the owner, Inglisia D'Os Pentecostal, 710 Turnpike Street, Stoughton. This is being...
Mr. Chairman, I've had trouble getting hold of the applicant and the sign company. You know, there's, obviously you remember, there's a little bit of a language barrier.
Right.
I'm going to, on behalf of the applicant, I'd like to request that it be continued to the June 8th meeting. That will give me some time to try to work something out and try to help them get to what they need, if, if the board would so choose. So I request on their behalf, a continuance to the June 8th meeting.
Can I have a motion that effect?
So made.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next item, number five, is a new public hearing to be held in the petition of the applicant of 84 lumber, Carrot James Zanny, 19, 1019 Route 5A, 84 PA, represented by JK Homero Engineering LLC, 1024 Pearl Street, Brockton, Mass, for site plan approval under Section 10.6, site plan approval of the town of Stoughton binding laws, proposed development of an approximate 6,825 square foot industrial building, including parking area for 11 cars located at Zero Page Street, assesses map 094W, 027 and 028 in the I industrial zone. Can the applicant and his representatives please come up to the, the board? Go ahead. I'm going to take a two-minute break for this minute, for right now. Thank you.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Jim Zonic. I am in-house engineer for 84 lumber. We're located about 20 miles south of Pittsburgh. We're a privately owned lumber yard. Been in operation since 1956. So what we're proposing on Page Street, which is just a little bit north here of Maple, is it's called an EWP facility, engineered wood products. So basically, usually these facilities are located right in our lumber yards, but we have a facility in Holbrook, and just for the fact that it's not enough space at that facility, we decided to come down the road here and put this facility here. It's got, it's on two parcels. One's 4.4, one's 2.2. And this basically facility is just a supplement for our lumber yard over in Holbrook. And what basically it is, this is going to be about a 6,000 or so square foot building that brings in material, long lengths of LVL joists, LVLs and wood joists. I'll bring them in via flatbeds, usually the lengths of lumber anywhere from, it could be anywhere from 40 to 60 feet. And then we cut them to spec, depending on customer, customer want and need. And the facility basically will be operating through the Holbrook facility. So if a customer calls up, usually they'll call the Holbrook store. And if a contractor's building a house or something, it'll usually just go to the Holbrook store. Then they'll call, they'll be calling this facility. And then that's how the, that's how the process usually works, is the store dictates the process and how it gets built. In this case, like I said, it's about a 6,000 square foot facility. There's going to be a small office inside of it, and a small little store space. The hours of operation as, right now, we think it's going to be right around 7 to 5, Monday through Friday. No, no weekends. And normally what will happen is in the mornings, usually at our other facilities, we have about 25 of these all over the country. Trucks will come in anywhere between 6 and 7 in the morning. It's usually two or three trucks on flatbeds. They'll bring in these long lengths of lumber, bring them into the yard. Our forklifts, our forklifts will unload them, stack them, just in preparation for orders, because we, orders come in periodically from the store. And then based off of that, we'll get an order in through the office manager. The saw itself, when we cut these joists, they're very long lengths of material. So the shed that we are proposing, just like all the other sheds, it's a very, has to be an open-spaced facade in front. When I'm going to say the front, it's actually facing the west. So the, the products come in, the forklifts unload them. And then, once the material gets cut for order, the for, the forklifts will bring them onto the concrete apron, bring them onto a conveyor. And then the conveyor will bring the material into the center of the shed. And the saw itself is roughly four by six. It's, it's just a one-saw operation. It's, it runs on a 6, or on a 100 amp circuit, and it pulls about 80 amps. But the material flows from right to left. And so, so if a customer wants 40 footers, we'll bring in these long lengths on the forklift, onto the conveyor on the right side. It brings them through to the saw, and then they come out on the left side. We take that material, we stack it in the yard, and then we wait for other orders to come. So we'll stack that, we'll palletize it, and then depending on when that customer wants it, we usually ship it with other trucks so that we're not bringing trucks all the time in and out. So we try to efficiently organize it so that we're not bringing too much material in and out at one time. So as far as what we, how many people be working here, we probably only have three to five people. We'll have an, we'll have an admin person, we'll have our, our office manager, or the production manager, we call it. And usually we have two or three or four people working in the yard. We have, the saw itself is computerized, so that when the office manager or the admin gets the order, it goes out into the shed. And we have, we have a computer monitor that sits right next to the saw. And that's how the orders get placed, and everything is cut to within an inch or two inches. So we usually have, you know, one or two forklift operators. So... So, we usually have, you know, one or two forklift operators, so, forklift operators. So, I could say the operation probably have above five employees. We don't expect too many more than that. We have enough parking for that, and then, you know, we, customers can come, and if they want, you know, it's, if they want to come in, it's, they're welcome. We have obviously sidewalks proposed and everything like that, but majority of the business, over 90 percent of it comes from the actual lumberyard itself, which is over in Holbrook. So, that's pretty much the gist of the operation. Scott here is going to answer any questions you may have as far as the details of, of the comments. So, thank you for your time.
I'm going to give it over to the staff first, and then we'll get into asking our questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Craig and I have prepared a pretty detailed technical review memo. I'm just going to highlight it, just a few of the, the key points. Number, the number one is, we really requested a sound study, because this is a three-sided building with the one side being open and the saw, and we really want to look at the, the issues with sound. That was actually brought up at the pre-app. Item number three, they were proposing a six-foot vinyl fence in the front, replacing the existing chain link. We're recommending that no fencing be in the front. It's full of scrub, trees, and, and overgrowth, and we feel that they need to present a better street frontage, clean all of that up. They'll have the parking lot, a nice street frontage landscaping, they have their drainage here in the, in this area. So, to, you know, if you look at, right across the street, there's a, a nice lawn area landscaping in the building. We, we think that that would be a much better street frontage that they need to look at doing. Item number seven, we find that the, this dumpster area that's down here, part of its pad is within the drive aisle, and then it's in this landscaped area, and for some reason there's a 30-foot gate that we don't know what it goes to. We're recommending that, we would think that the dumpster, it has no sidewalks, no access to, and it's just stuck way out away from, you know, you can see it right here. We think that it should probably be incorporated back behind the building, where it's actually going to be used by the folks. So, that's an issue that I think they need to look at. Item number 12, I'm recommending that landscape plan be revised to provide a more detailed design and variety of plantings. They didn't provide the required color photos per the zoning bylaw. And then, I'll finish off. Number 13, the elevation, they're mislabeled on the directions, that, that can be easily corrected, but we feel that the, that the, does not present a very good street frontage.
Can you put that up?
I will. It is this, south elevation is actually the east elevation.
Yeah.
This is the, would be the front of the building that's facing the street, and as I wrote in my memo, it doesn't prevent visually street frontage. It recommends some architectural detailing, such as a base band, you know, of split face block. They should look at some other finestrations, foundation plantings. They should also use other architectural elements to break the wall up, and they could possibly use also variety, more than just one color. They're proposing the, the blue color, which might be the gentleman's same color as his shirt, I'm not quite sure, but I, I bet it is, or it's, because it's kind of a logo. So, those are from the, kind of the site design, site aspects. There's other technical things, which I don't need to get into tonight, that the applicant can deal with. That's kind of the overall site design and aesthetic issues that I've seen, and I will let Craig talk about some of the engineering.
Thank you, Bill. If you could go back to that blow-up of the layout, it'd be great.
The engineering one?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
So, my, first comment, and these are, I'm not going to pick specific numbers out of the technical review. The, the access drive, I think should be formalized. So, right now, they've proposing generally a 30-foot wide driveway, but with no improvements to the south edge of the, that driveway. I, I think it'd be beneficial to provide curbing on both sides of the driveway, formalize that, and provide a rounding for the south side of the driveway as it goes on to Page Street. Just clean that up. I agree with the placement of the dumpster. We, it's a really weird spot for it there. I know that that, that driveway's pretty, pretty wide and everything, but your trucks are coming in and out of there. It's kind of a weird spot to have your dumpster. So, I recommend that be moved. They're proposing Cape Cod berm throughout the parking area. The, the board typically requires vertical granite curbing for all commercial developments in their parking areas. We recommend that to be the case here for this parking lot, it's a pretty small area. Let's see here. The grading behind the building, although it looks really flat, you got two-foot contours back there, the drop, I think you need to look at what's going on with the concrete pad and, and the grade just off the edge of that. I just put like a 2% slope on the, on the pad itself, and then I, I think I ended up with like a 17% grade directly off of that. So, that, that grading back there should be cleaned up and just flattened out to make sure that those trucks can circulate around back there without having to get over any, any steep slopes. The proposed drainage, we need stormwater test pits performed on the site, and they need to be witnessed by the, the engineering department. And it's, it might actually be fortunate that we're, we're doing that now, because my next comment would be to recommend that we relocate the subsurface chambers to the front of the system, of the site, and the reason for that is just to consolidate it. I, I have test pit data that you had submitted, and so we know what the soils are in that area. And I, I think if you, if you put that all together and, and provide an overflow into the, into the basin, and then direct it around the back of the site, it'll, it'll operate a little bit more efficiently, and you'll have less piping. You had some yard drains in the back that I think would be pretty inefficient, the way they're designed, they're not in any low spots or anything, just kind of on the slope. So, I, I think we can just kind of shift things around there and, and clean that up a bit. We need an updated O and M plan for the site that includes all site amenities, such as fencing, signage, landscaping, and so forth. It's not the typical stormwater O and M that you typically prepare. This just goes a little bit further, and, and we end up having that recorded along with the decision, so that that, that goes forward with the property, so that we ensure that the, the features on the site are maintained. And I think that about, oh, actually, your stormwater calc's need to use the latest NOAA Atlas 14 rainfall data, so they're just a little bit higher than what you use in your calculations, and I'd be happy to get together with you and just kind of go over those comments so that we can just hammer them out. And that's it. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions this time?
I have one. Where is Zero Page Street? I went on Google Maps, and I've lived in this town for 50 years, and I couldn't find Zero Page Street.
I'm going to tell you, and if you look at the previous applicant that was here for three hours and 45 minutes, it's Zero Maple. Whenever there's no assigned address, the conventional way it's done is they write zero. I had the same problem, because if you look at it, I know what the address is, I, I can pick one in between. Once it gets developed, the building commissioner. So, you know, I have not been here that long, but in noticing that, I've seen it on several applications, they clearly, it's when a site doesn't have an address.
So, whereabouts on Page Street is it?
It's, it's between 354 and 318.
They're actually using it as a storage yard right now. There's a, if you go down there, there's a, there's a yard that if you looked in the back-
It's about 100 and-
Miles of lumber back there.
About 100 yards north of Maple, on Page.
Not far off of Maple Street.
Okay.
Josie's, Josie's on the other side. Josie's all the way?
Josie was all the way.
But he was on the other side. Oh, did he have both sides?
White had one side.
Oh, okay, yeah. Good. So, he is using, if you go down there right now, you see the lumber.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to see if it's in the middle of a residential area where, you know, what was going on with it?
One resident is, because we've gone out there, business, there's various businesses across the street. There is, the site to the north is some sort of business. The site to the south, I think, is one of the three or four residences. The previous applicant mentioned, we're still on Page Street, and that's one of them.
Okay.
It's, it-
So, I know where it is now.
It appears to be a residence.
Okay. All right. And there were some comments I saw from the water department, too. Was a trench drain that was going into the sewer system that's not allowed, too?
Yeah, so, we'll work through that.
Yeah, okay.
That's a, a floor drain for the, the vehicle area, so, those are allowed to go into, they have to go through an oil-water separator, and then they go to the sewer.
Okay.
Anybody else on the board? Anybody from the public ever needed to say?
Yes, sir.
Thank God I don't have to work tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Mullin, 19 Clover Lane. Hey, just a couple of quick, quick questions. Does the petition currently own the property? Did you buy it, or?
I believe it's a lease right now.
Leasing? Are you intention buying, or, just curious?
I don't have that agreement. I don't, I don't, I didn't read, I don't know.
Okay. No, just a question. I'm glad the town proposed maybe some noise studies, because the saw's going to make some noise up there. And what's your hours of operation? What are you planning on?
We propose 7:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and then not, not open on weekends.
Okay, good. So, as I drove up there, I noticed that you already have lumber there?
That I don't know.
Oh, there's something in there.
There is presently lumber there.
Yeah, there's lumber in there.
I've not been to the site.
Okay, that's-
Not from your side.
Okay. Hey, no problem. Not trying to, no quays or anything.
That's fine.
No, I just, so you're going to have trucks coming in and out of there, too, delivering lumber?
Yeah. What we're trying to do is to limit traffic. We, we try to organize trucks so that we get there in the mornings, the flatbeds bring in the long lengths of lumber.
Excuse me. As I had stated earlier, we try to limit the trucks and try to be efficient how we bring them in, 2:00 or 3:00 in the mornings. We try to get there at 6:00 to 7:00 so that, you know, get there before all the traffic. Then we unload them, they, they get out, and then, you know, periodically, as customers order material, the material gets cut up, and then they get shipped out to certain contractors or housing, you know, developments and such, and that can be randomly through the day. There might be five to 10 trucks anywhere, starting from, you know, maybe 10:00 in the morning till the afternoon hours, but nothing, nothing crazy.
I would think that maybe some of the deliveries 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning might be difficult for some of the neighbors, if they have the, you know, the trucks beeping up, the noise backing up or anything.
Not really. They're just going to come up, we're, we're waiting for them, and we, that's why we want them in the mornings, so that it's before all the traffic, so they'll come up and then we'll just take care of them.
Right. There's no neighbors right here this evening, but, you know.
Neighbors here.
Yeah, the neighbors aren't here. Yeah.
I got you.
No, it's okay. Okay, that's all I have right now, and you're going to be Monday through Friday?
Yes.
7:00 to 5:00?
Correct.
Okay. You're not going to, what's the hours of sawing, when you're going to start the sawing?
It's periodic, so it all depends on orders, but obviously it wouldn't start until, you know, 7:00 o'clock, but it's all depends on how the orders come in from our store. So, it's not, it's not a full-time operation. We might saw something for, you know, an hour or two, then stop and, you know, wait until we get orders. But the sawing, the sawing itself is very simple, too. Like I say, the material comes in via a forklift onto a conveyor. It comes in through this little saw. Like I say, the saw itself, the, the assembly, it's on a housing unit, and I can bring a picture next week. We're still deba, we're still debating on what saw to purchase, so it's, it's kind of got a housing unit on it, and it's just, it's got one router, it comes through, and then it comes out the other end, so it's-
Okay.
Very simple operation.
So, that's the building, your, the shed is what you call in the industrial building?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's just a pre-engineered middle building, but like I say, we talked about the comments tonight, and we'll dress it up and make it look better, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, no further questions.
Peter Murphy, 60 Peters Drive, simple question. As far as the dumpster, is that going to be a one dumpster for the site, or do you have a dumpster for, again, for food or whatever, you know, like a trash dumpster?
It'll probably be, I'm not, I'll get into, I can ask our operational folks that. The dumpster obviously was an oversight. We'll put it behind the shed, either to the north west corner, not north, west corner behind the shed, you know, up in that area there. So, there'll be, you know, we only have like four or five employees, so there's not like any massive waste being produced, and any kind of excess material for wood, we put in a dumpster there, so.
The reason I bring up the issue as far as trash is because a lot of construction going on there, rodents and everything else. If you throw it into the same dumpster, you may have an issue with that, so.
Yeah. I'll look into that, yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Richard.
I heard you mention in your opening statements that your saw was drawing 80 amps. Is that correct?
Yeah. I think the startup amps is right around 80 to 100 amps. It actually runs at about 60 to 70. So, normally what we do is we put a 100-amp breaker. Well, we're going to bring a 400-amp service in, a 277 480 service, and that will, and then we'll, off of that, we'll have a disconnect just for the saw, and that'll pull. Like I say, the saw itself only pulls about 70, 80 amps.
That's a lot of amps. The, how big a piece of lumber will this saw accept in terms of?
So, depending on orders, what, like I said, much I mentioned, the forklifts will bring material in on the right side. The saw itself sits smack dab in the center of the shed, so the center operating part of the shed is 150 foot long, and what we do is we put a column in the center, so we have 75 feet on each side of where the saw sits. So, material will come in via the forklift onto a conveyor, and that material is random also, depending on the customer's needs or the contractor's needs. We might load a 40-foot piece of material, we might load a 60-foot piece of material, maybe a 30-foot, and then the saw itself, it just comes through the saw, it chops it up, and it comes out the left end, and then we take it off the, off that conveyor, and then we store it into the, into the yard, and it's, all depend on order. So, I can't specifically say it's not all the same. It's all random as far as, you know, there's LVLs, there's wood joists, and it's all different types of, you know, a lot of custom homes, different, you know, clearances and things, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, we have so much outstanding stuff, I'm assuming you'd want to ask for a continuance at this point in time?
Yeah, we'll, we'll address the comments. There are some oversights, obviously, with the dumpster and fencing and gates, and then we'll, we'll come back. We'll have a rendering for you folks as far as what are the, what the shed will look like on the front. We'll dress it up with some kind of wainscoting, some split face maybe, and most likely make the building a tan building with like a beige split face block, but we'll have a rendering for you next time.
Okay. So, can we have a date certain, so we-
Yeah, I've already talked to him. June 8th.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to request a continuous to June 8th?